I will welcome everyone to the Provo Municipal Council Work Session. It is 12:35 PM, Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. We are gathered in the City Center Conference Room, 351 West Center Street, Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web, on the Provo City Council YouTube Channel, where it will also be available for on-band viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room, in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects, as well as site conversations. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Strachan?
Sir Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Gary Winterton.
Nick Knack.
George Handley.
Elizabeth Vanoverken.
David Harding.
Kay Vanoverken.
Bryce Humphreys.
George Stewart.
Mayor Kupisi.
Wayne Parker.
Iceman Paxton.
Thank you, and we acknowledge the many city staff as well in the room with us. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. We welcome Councillor Sewell, who has joined us now. To begin, we will consider the proposal to approve the following minutes. Before we begin, we will have an opening prayer provided by Ms. Claroline Hill.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee so much for the opportunity that we have to be here together, making plans for our city and for the important things that we do here in the beautiful city of Provo. Maybe for all the staff and the people who are so helpful to make things happen here. Maybe for the citizens who step up and volunteer, maybe for the people, for the good blessings that we have in this city and the many good things that are happening. Please bless us today during this meeting that we will have guidance in all decisions that are made and be saved by the name of Jesus Christ.
And then, Ms. Claroline Hill? Now, we will begin by considering the proposal to approve the following minutes. December 11th, 2018, work meeting. January 31st, 2019, joint meeting with the Oran Council. And February 19th, 2019, also a work meeting. Are there any objections to these minutes or requests for changes? I assume none. I will now declare them approved by unanimous consent. Item one on our agenda is a discussion regarding the proposed conservation easement for the Rock Canyon Trailhead. This will be presented by Doug Robbins, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. And we have it budgeted for 15 minutes.
I'd like to thank the municipal council for allowing us to come and present to you today about where we are in the process of this conservation easement of the Rock Canyon Trailhead. Presented several times to this group over the past couple of years, and we're excited to say that we're very close to being ready with our final recommendation. Today, we're also joined with members of the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance, Board of Directors, Claroline Hill, Tijer Lee, and Eric Davis. So they're partners that have been with us all through this process, and we're excited about what we have to share with you today.
Make sure it's on.
Okay, just as a quick background, this is the property that we're talking about. This is the former Lickie parcel. This parcel was acquired by the city, working with the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance just a couple of years ago. Location's right, proximate to the mouth of Rock Canyon, and the entire parcel is just over 18 acres. A little bit of background history too. 1995, Trailhead as it exists right now was constructed under the George Stewart administration that provided public access since that moment in time, parking and commitment to our preservation. The Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance was right there with us all the way through that process. Moving on to 2015, we established a more formalized partnership agreement with the RCPA, with a memorandum of understanding. And we decided at that point it would be wise to establish a stakeholders group that would meet regularly and develop a master plan that would help make the management and operation of our preserve that canyon a little bit more transparent. And so we started meeting, followed up in 2016 with purchase of the Davis parcel. The city acquired that, working with Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance and negotiating that deal. 2017, this Lickie parcel, that was acquired through a 50-50 matching grant. I think it was $160,000 on each party point towards the purchase of that property. And a conservation easement at that time was established upon a portion of that property to prevent development behind some of the homes, some of the people that were selling the sellers of the property. And then in 2018, Mercy Media requested a conservation easement on the entire parcel, the assisted in the acquisition of. And we started working on the master plan. So we've established a proven track record of partnership between the city, Parks and Recreation Department, and the RCPA. Again, this is how we really look at the distribution of this partnership. Provo City has public ownership, will always retain that, of course. Management and stewardship of the property, of course, falls on the city. The maintenance, law enforcement, and then recently, we've been very successful in obtaining some grants this past year through some of the sources that we can apply to the government's office of economic development. $100,000 was awarded to us, as well as a $70,000 grant through our Don Imola Rice Trail Program. So those funds will go towards some funds that the RCPA has received in their fundraising efforts to go towards the first phase of Trailhead improvements as part of the master plan. The RCPA will continue to offer this valuable volunteer service that we've enjoyed over the past several years. They've got a question.
Yes, sir. I've got a question about the grants.
Yes.
And the grants. Are you guys, how are you pointing out about those? Are you the ones that's applying for those, and how do they come about? That's wonderful.
Yeah, several state and federal agencies have grant programs that you can apply for. So we keep a close tab on when those cycles come through and apply for those, whenever we have a project that qualifies.
And it's you in the department that actually just said, "Ah, here's some potential."
Exactly, and that really helps extend and leverage the available funding that we have within our budgets.
Oh my gosh, it's huge, thank you.
Yeah. Again, the RCPA has local membership that's valuable. They're not a national organization, they're right here in Provo, and they have a very strong fundraising effort that is beneficial to the preservation of the canyon. Okay, so we'll get into the details of the conservation easement itself. We've presented several times on this, but this is really where we're at. Originally, we were working off a draft that came from another community. It was really quite lengthy and really had many elements that didn't really apply to what we need here. We worked together to work that 15-page document that really had more of a punitive tone to it, down to something that we can really, both sides agree to. It's currently a little over two pages, with a signature page as far as the narrative of that grant. Again, right now, it's much more cooperative than the two, just spelling out what we're going to work together to accomplish, and we feel really good about that. The city again would continue to maintain ownership, management, law enforcement of the site as it remains city property. It preserves these existing public utility easements that exist on the land. It would involve the entire formal Lickie parcel, so it would be a partial easement of the deal of the entire site. And it references the 2015 memorandum of understanding that we established with the RCPA. It does reference the Rock Canyon Trailhead Master Plan, and that is a document that was then designed to change over time, but it is referenced here so that we can continue working together on keeping that document current. As part of our internal administrative review, we did find after discussing this with our Public Works counterparts that they had a need that they wanted in this conservation easement to provide for a future groundwater aquifer recharge type approach if that needs to happen in the future. That might even allow some of these dry creek beds to flow during certain periods of the year, whereas they may have done that historically. So we felt like that was something good to get back into the conservation easement. The term of this, as we discussed in the last meeting, is in perpetuity the way it's written today, and it is transferable or signable if both parties agree.
Another question, Ms. Midby, predict, how difficult, how invasive is an aquifer recharge?
It probably won't be very invasive at all. Right now, what we anticipate are either basins or current channels that are dry, like Doug talked about during parts of the year, where we would have some kind of a source of water that would be able to be used in those streams. So my feeling right now is it would actually augment the conservation easement, it would probably enhance it.
So it's not like we have to bring a lot of equipment up to do that and shoot it into the ground to rejuvenate?
There may be some underground, temporary underground pipe work that needs to be done in bringing in that water source, but it's, there's nothing that's, at least I envision right now, that would be above ground and permanent for that kind of approach.
That could really be helpful, thank you.
So I read the agreement, I can't remember call at the moment, but something like the groundwater aquifer recharge, that's something that's, at least has, it's only been on the council's radar for a year or two. I imagine in 10 years, there might be something like that that comes up. Right here, we've got the transferable, signable by mutual agreement. Could changes be made? If you say, "Oh, well, whatever the next thing is that would really enhance," and as long as both parties agree, we can make that change?
I believe so. Because it's allowable in the conservation easement that we're offering, I think that would be something that we would work into the Parks and Rec, I'm sorry, the Rock Canyon Trailhead Master Plan, and make sure that we coordinate this very well and that it's a, we take a natural approach to this kind of effort. So yeah, it's possible I could work with it. Thank you. All right, so this is where we are in the process. We've worked through Rock Canyon Trailhead Master Plan, we've reviewed design concepts, prepared those with our consultants, we've held some public involvement, we even had an open house in conjunction with the RCPA to thank some of the donors that donated in the past and also inform them of what those design concepts are. And we're of course committed to ongoing coordination with Forest Service and other partners that we have, along with the RCPA up in the canyon. We've gone through our administrative review internally throughout all the departments of the city, and we've resolved any that have come up. We've gone through our legal review, and our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has given us a favorable recommendation to bring it to the council again and file a form. So we're ready to answer any other questions that you might have.
Doug?
I don't know if I could, if I just failed to find it, but was there, is there any budget for ecological restoration, or is that something that the RCPA is going to try to work on? I mean, I notice, I'm thinking especially of those areas in the middle between the trails where you're getting rid of a lot of that pavement. I mean, I know there's a lot of ecological restoration needed throughout the entire mouth of the canyon, but that area in particular is going to be ripped up, and then it's going to need to be replanted. So I'm just curious where the budget for that ecological stuff?
We could certainly work together with regard to fundraising efforts and another grants and other planning opportunities we might have, but it would all fold together into that master plan, and we would approach that together.
Does that mean that currently we don't have the budget for that, but that's something we're anticipating?
Right now, with the grant funding that we have right now, the first phase really calls into addressing some of the parking issues that we have up front. But we would just march through that as funding becomes available, have a systematic approach through.
May I speak to his issue and Gary's first issue? And that is that the master plan really is going to address areas that are already disturbed right at the very front of the canyon where the parking lot area is currently. But as we work on the master plan, ecological restoration is important, and Dr. Phil Allen, who's with our group, has gotten almost $200,000 in the past. Gosh, how long ago was that, Doug? It was like 15, 20 years ago, but now he's gearing up, and he's gotten one grant and is working with departments in BYU so that there can be ecological restoration using grant monies that he can access. So some of that will come from the RCPA side.
We'd also make one comment. There's one person, there's been many people that have been very involved in making this happen and working on this, but one person that really is kind of behind the scenes in a lot of these cases and does a whole lot for us is Tara Riddle, our property manager. She was involved in every single one of these real estate transactions, helping to negotiate and close these deals. And she's not here today, but I just want to make sure that I mentioned that. And also Chad Hill, our surveyor, he's gone out and verified our survey out on site to make sure it's accurate. So we've got a really good team internally that really supports these efforts as well.
I've got another question then. As you talk about those grants, I love that. And it sounds to me that the grants are very specific. Do you find conflicting opportunities with certain grants? Oh, I got to go after this one this year for this purpose. I would really like to have a grant also for this person, the same grant for this purpose.
Sometimes those decisions have to be made. Usually we use our CIP, the review of the council, that's a pretty good, helps steer those priorities as we have to make those calls.
But that grant is, when you apply for it, it's very specific on what you're going to do with it usually, isn't it?
Right, it is, yeah. All right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We will stay with Parks and Rec for item number two, which is a presentation of Parks and Rec as well as the redevelopment agency regarding the creation of a redevelopment area near the East Bay Golf Course. So Mr. Iverson, will you start?
Dave Walters.
Mr. David Walters will be beginning the presentation. He is our Director of Redevelopment. And we have 30 minutes budgeted for this item.
Chair Harding, members of the council, good afternoon. So this is substantially similar to what we have shown you before at the joint meeting with the school district. I'd like to just go over a few things. So when the medical school project came about, there was a clause within the real estate purchase agreement that the city would use its best efforts to create a tax increment area that would help pay for some of the associated housing that was scheduled to be on this portion of the development. As you may remember, this is going to involve the relocation of these holes to some property that the city already owns adjacent to the golf course and is not part of the improvements that are slated to be considered as we go through this proposal. GT Medical Holdings, the developer, is going to relocate those affected holes. It will be built on the former Cooney property. They are now currently, yes, sir?
Finish your sentence. I just wanted you to repeat, I may have misheard. So when we signed this agreement, we said we would do our best efforts?
Use our best efforts to create a redevelopment project area at work, as it's now known, community reinvestment area.
Right. In order to help pay for the housing, is that what?
It was going to, it was only going to be on this portion, so if I skip to the next, so this is, shows the development relations to the entire golf course. And this is the portion that was going to be the housing, and then this would be the medical school. And then this is the area that the three holes are going to be replaced. This is the former Cooney property. So Section 3.3 of the Real Estate Purchase Agreement has a clause in that says the city would use its best efforts to create this redevelopment tax increment area.
Okay, thank you. This is, I kind of, that triggered me also with Dave. I don't remember that going actually for housing. They said, because I don't remember, I don't know that when we approved this, we said, "Yeah, we'll consider redevelopment," and on that piece of property. But I thought it was more for retail at the time.
So they're slated to build housing and ancillary retail, whether that's a gas station, a hotel, or something along those lines. This is the area of the property, the project that that is going to be focused on.
And I can understand that. I was just, I actually was kind of shocked that we were talking about a big housing complex.
I think it was, they're, I, my recollection is that they were always talking about housing on a portion of this, and there was going to be the road that would cut through here, and then there was also going to be some ancillary retail that was going to be associated with that.
Thank you.
And just my recollection, it's been a while, but my recollection did include retail, or sorry, residential, but specifically residential for the medical schools. So it might be certain housing, it might be the hotels for, because a lot of their students are just taking week-long courses or a couple of week courses, and so it would be like a hotel there. So that was, that's my recollection.
And there might be like a convenience store that would be associated with it.
Yeah.
And there was, that's all true, but the way they pitched it was, we're paying top dollar for that piece from Nature Sunshine, and we're trying to recoup some of our costs, of which, whether you call it recoup the cost of the purchase or the development, it was very specific for whatever taxes were generated on this piece to go back to help offset those expenses, whether they be development or land costs. That was very specific on what they were trying to accomplish, and it was only that piece right there. So, yes, sir.
Could you clarify Dixon? I remember that. Did it say in the final agreement, did it say for a maximum period of 12 years?
Yeah, yes.
When did that time start?
I don't think we've started yet because I don't know if we've actually started or...
What we are asking you to contemplate, we would bring it back, and we would have a kickoff resolution. So that timeframe hasn't started yet. Part of that's because the agreement says post-closing, that after the transfer, we would use our best efforts to create this project area. And part of it's in recognition that none of this is going to happen until the three holes are relocated and operational, so that there's no impact to the golf course and its operations as they perform.
So none of this would start on the Nature Sunshine property?
That's...
Because that wouldn't disturb the three hole, right?
I, I...
Yeah, so I think the starting point could, well, typically it wouldn't start until the agreement is actually in place, and that agreement is what this conversation is...
So the tax increment agreement?
That's going to come out of this, it's still approved, that's what we would...
I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, it's a good point to clarify.
It would be whenever the tax area, increment area gets established, and the resolution that we would be asking you to consider would be the start of that process, and then we'd go through several public hearings and meetings, not only with this council, but the school board, county commissioners, and so forth. And then there would be a final enactment where you would adopt a plan that would incorporate all of this.
Brian, did you have a...
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify from the actual language. So, you know, first off, just recognizing this conversation about using reasonable efforts. So the agreement is that the seller, meaning the city, shall use reasonable efforts post-closing to persuade the RDA to act. So the RDA doesn't have any obligation to act, correct? It's just that the city has an obligation to try to convince the RDA to act. But then with respect to that, first particular question is, it's to reimburse purchaser for its payment of real property taxes on improvements made by the purchaser for a period of 12 years, beginning on the date they commence construction of the improvements. That's what the agreement says.
And how's that defined? Will they go out and do test holes? Or get their first inspection, or get a permit?
I don't know that any of that's defined. That probably would have to be defined even in the resolution approving it. You know...
But another similar CDA/RDA reinvestment, they usually don't start until there's at least an agreement, which doesn't become official until the RDA board, the county, and the school district all sign off saying, "Yeah, we agreed to do this." If you compare that to other agreements that have been, that's usually when the clock starts to...
So in the meantime, they just continue to pay the taxes as is?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, then, well, they will, and they will pay the taxes after the agreement, the area is...
It's always...
Right.
But according to the language, it's when construction starts, right?
Right, so I, you know, just again, I don't disagree with what Dixon's saying about what we've usually done in the past. As far as the city's obligation in this paragraph, if you didn't approve the agreement until two years after they started construction, you could probably limit the agreement to 10 years. Does that make sense? But it's just, I mean, that's up to you to determine what that agreement's going to say.
Mr. Strachan?
Did, sorry, did Rocky Mountains' representations to the city, did it clarify that whether or not the tax increments would apply to commercial or residential property in terms of their development?
Just the development of the property, again, holding it only to the Nature Sunshine piece?
Yeah, all this says is to reimburse them for the real property taxes on any improvements, so it could be all kinds of any kind.
So when this was discussed, and there was, obviously there were a lot more improvements that were contemplated in this area, but initially there was no thought of extending the tax increment to come off this property to go back into here. It was simply site-generated tax increment that was going to be applied to that. So it's important, I think I, there was a question last time, and I want to point out again, that none of the tax increment on any of this is going to reimburse them for the development of these holes. These holes were, their development is, they're obligated to do that whether they get the tax increment or not. So as they, in the course of working with the planning for the replacement of holes, Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department, you know, started contemplating some of the enhancements, further enhancements that they could do to the golf course. They would not only improve play for existing, adding walkways, adding lights, and so forth, but also bringing in some opportunities that might make golf more accessible to a broader segment of the population. That people like myself that aren't that skilled at golf could go out there and maybe get a better feel for the game. So those improvements were going to be between $1,005 and $1,007. And as they started looking for ways to fund the ideas that if we could potentially expand the project area where we could generate tax increment onto the medical school itself, we could apply that tax increment flow to these improvements. So we established that it's two benefit areas. Benefit area one, this was the housing/commercial area that was initially contemplated, and benefit area two would be the balance of the medical school development. Benefit area two would be the area that would generate tax increment that would go to pay for some of these improvements that are now being contemplated by the park. for some of these improvements that are now being contemplated by the Parks and Recreation Department. It's not, it's not unusual to have one project area that has two income streams coming from the tax increment. We have a similar situation at the mall, where Dillards is getting property tax increment that it generates, that tax increment. They own 12 and a half acres, plus they're building, balance of the mall is owned by Brixton Capital, and they get the balance of the tax increment generated by the project area. So it's not that different. And in this case, we're looking at doing some enhancements to the golf course as opposed to in other cases where we've done public infrastructure improvements. So, I'll, so this is the new master plan for the golf course. And I will turn the time over now to Brent and or Scott to ask us some questions.
Brent, and before...
Yes?
Brent, Brent goes on, can we, can I ask you about the second...
The benefit areas?
The second benefit, yeah, benefit area, area two.
Yes.
At this time, are we thinking that 100% of that benefit area would go towards the golf course of the increment, or is...
I, jump to the spreadsheet now that maybe we'll, or we can come, we can come back to that question after he's had a chance to talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, that's fine, that's great.
It's been so long since I've been up here, so thank you. I don't have the cheesy video this time, I apologize, but feel free to just interrupt and ask questions as we go. We covered a lot of these things last time. This, I apologize, as part of the master plan, doesn't really have the, or this has a laser pointer, doesn't, I'm sorry. This doesn't really have, this is a more updated version of the medical campus site, and so you can see this line here. If this were the complete set, there are, I believe, four buildings there Dixon? Last shot we saw of the housing, and then everything else on this benefit area two would be the medical school. And again, as Dave mentioned, this area down here is fully paid for by the medical school and their project, not as part of any tax increment financing. So going forward, we talked last time about a futures course, which is a relatively new concept to golf. In fact, there's only one course in the, in the country, and as far as we can tell, the entire world that this, this concept exists. And you can see it's these larger plastic clubs. We will not be using the Velcro stick out of the hole, we'll actually use a larger hole. And you can see down here, there's, it's, it's kind of a modified tennis ball. The ball goes about 80 yards in the air. You can take strollers and children, and it's, it's perfect for families, and it's, it's really easy to, to pick up the game. As part of that, we will also be rerouting and changing the short course, which already exists, to be lighted as well. And the reason that we're changing that is the concept is to light the driving range on its existing poles and fence line, and then as, as part of that, shine lights outward and shine lights inward. So the range would be lighted, and then the short course, which does kind of a horseshoe around the driving range, and you can see where the futures course would sit in there as well. The light would, would broadcast out and broadcast in. So what that means going forward, again, back to this slide, you've got the short course here, and then you've got that futures course, which is Starting New at Golf is the acronym for SNAG, would all be lighted. The reason that's, that's great in our mind for several reasons. One, there are several lighted driving ranges in the, in the state. I can think, I mean, several meaning two. We would join that club, we would be the only lighted golf course of any kind in the entire state of Utah. There is one in Las Vegas called Angel Park, which is where this picture was taken, kind of the same concept. And then in terms of that futures course, SNAG course, there is not one lighted anywhere. So that would open up another area for families and those types of things. Also with SNAG, or the futures course, that equipment is, we can take it into the schools. So as we mentioned to the school board last time, we can go to the elementary schools, the junior highs, the middle schools, and do it in the middle of winter, and teach them about golf, how to golf, the benefits of it, let them hit the tennis ball all around the gym, and then once summer comes, we can, we can take them outside and actually take them on the, on the golf course. Anybody have any questions on that concept?
Gary? The concept's great, and I'm really excited about it. I guess one of the questions that I'm going to be asked is the maintenance, paying for the power, is that in your budget, is that, have you considered...
Yes, so just a simple change to, with LED lighting now, and the ability to, to light it, it, we won't run it all the time. In our research on it, you know, once you go past 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, you're really not generating that much revenue, but the added revenue will offset any costs that we have. It actually makes things a lot easier in that, in a very simple term, if we're out mowing the short course or the driving range, and we either have to shut one of those down, like the driving range, to mow it, we have to pick all the golf balls off of it and then send mowers out. We can do that in the middle of the dark now. We can do it at four in the morning when there's, when there's nobody playing. There's, there's so many benefits to having that lighted area that, that the revenue will certainly offset the costs. So it's not really a concern.
And I don't, this is another question for another discussion. As we invest in this golf course, are we looking at the canyon? What are we, what do we do with that, or is that, is that becoming less and less relevant in our future plans?
I mean, certainly it's, it's a discussion that can and, and might be had amongst the council and administration. I don't know, and maybe Scott or anyone can speak to that. It's an option. I, I know that the medical school is extremely excited to have this happening next door. They've been heavily involved actually in the design of this area here to make sure that it blends going forward.
We definitely explored the option when we were talking about this development, it was one of the things explored was canyon. There's a, there's a lot of steps in that. There's, there's property acquisition with the federal government, and then there is also that, the capital expense and cost with going up the canyon. It's an exciting golf prospect. I think what this does is really creates a viable golf center where we have it now. And then, we were always, you know, looking to the future, see what options come down the road, but it's substantial capital expense, I think, is what the architects came back with to be, to develop the course of that canyon. So when, when the city is ready to invest in that, that type of golf venue, then I think it would become a much more serious conversation.
One thing that we, that entertained us about the canyon course was it kind of turned it into a destination-type facility because of the views. And one thing that we feel about this new routing, with the combination of the medical schools, three new holes, and having the new 18 finish in by the medical school, really gives us that destination facility in a spot that we already have a golf course. It really takes us to that next level that certainly doesn't exist in the county, we believe, and would make East Bay certainly one of the top golf courses in the state of Utah. So I will turn it over to Scott.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. Can you, can you maybe put some of those enlarged holes on four or five of the holes on 18?
Sorry, say that again. Oh yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's, I mean, this, this over here, the bid's closed tomorrow actually, and we will have, you know, vacos in the ground by first of May, we hope. And then as of now, this will be sodded, so that is going to be a quick growing area and in play rather quickly, so.
Just looking at that overview, that looks like a lot more water than we used to see. Is that, is that representing what's already there, or are we adding a lot more water?
No, the only thing that's being added is just this new lake to, to put the island green that we promised the public in. So, we're actually losing water, believe it or not. There's a lake that sits right here, there's a lake that sits right here. This lake is still there, it will be modified a little bit and beautified, but it's still there. So we actually lose a little more water and certainly add this in. But our, our architect, if you follow golf, you see Sawgrass, the island green, the famous one, it's just a green and then it's got nothing around it. What we tried to do with this is really make it a larger area that, that most people can hit. One of the concerns that was brought up in the public meeting was you're going to make this harder, and so we've really tried to, to add this island to be a lot better and a lot more playable and enjoyable for everyone.
I have a question for Wayne. Often when we look at this, we, we don't remember the things that made it possible. And there's a history of the Cooney's property, and I think if you're looking for specific actions taken by Mayor, you know, Spillings, this would not be possible.
That's right. Yeah, that was in private ownership before, and was the home of a rendering plant, which created all kinds of interesting dynamics in East Bay, South Provo area. And with federal grants and combination of city dollars, put together, we acquired the property and then relocated Cooney's out to Mills? Yeah, I always want to say Milner, but it's Mills. And, and then that created this opportunity then to, to make this change for the, for the golf course and the school.
Back then on a bad day, people were throwing out on the golf course?
Yes.
They were at their own homes. That was the, that was the first reason I ever went to a city council meeting in Provo, the smell that was coming in my front yard.
It was not only Provo City, as Wayne mentioned, the state and feds, but both Novell and Newskin made contributions to that, as well as the East Bay Association, all making that possible.
The ironic thing about that, Scott and I joke about this, is that this area is so beautiful now. So you've taken one end of the spectrum to the complete opposite end. As soon as this area is completed, it probably will be the most photographed area on the entire golf course, and certainly one of the prettiest areas as well, so, in a full circle.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of history at this site. So, just to go into, a lot of times when, and I think we could describe it as a very collaborative process, when we were talking about this medical school development and the golf course, and it was collaborative and spirited, and we were always looking for that win-win solution. I think by taking this second area and going forward and looking at this as a possible funding source for the golf course, I think, from my mind, the golfers will see the greater benefit to the, the community where we got this medical school, and there's a lot of people excited about that, but the land that the golf course lost, you know, which is being remit again the other side, and also there's an investment in the golf course, it really truly creates that outdoor active win-win solution. And we've gone over some of these benefits, but really to hit on the, the futures course, you know, it makes us a very unique element, and it matches to Provo's programming, young families. Anything we do in this programming and Parks and Recreation turns into a success story. And then when we have a lighted range, and we are able to extend our business day and expand our use, that's going to be better for us. So anything that we create as an expense, Gary, is going to be made up by early spring and late fall extended use. And that driving range is a huge revenue producer for our golf course. It also, and this will be what we'll say to the school district, it expands us as a training facility for all those universities and high schools that utilize our course as their home course, so we're able to expand our training in those areas. And so, with the medical school project and these three beautiful new holes that we are getting out of that mitigation, in combination to this lighted course and added amenities, it takes us to where we sit now as the most played course, to I know we will be still the most played course in Utah Valley, but maybe the best course in Utah Valley, and be able to make that claim. And so, that's why we're excited about this project, and how it works into this win-win solution that we're constantly looking for when we're, we're bringing all these different types of groups together. So now we go to the really exciting part, and it's to David's spreadsheet.
So, this is the current value, as we mentioned last time that we were here with the school board. Properties transfers, this is the larger piece, which would be benefit area two, previously shown. It does not currently have an assigned value. So the school districts request us is that none of this would really get a, I mean, we would anticipate that once, if the project area is approved and finally adopted, that this market value here would be in place prior to that. And so, that's important because that becomes what they call the base year. So every taxing entity that currently gets taxes would still get whatever taxes they get on the base year. It's only with that increase in value as it goes forward that the redevelopment agency has the opportunity to capture a portion of it. We wouldn't necessarily get all of it, and we don't expect to get all of it.
Can you help me understand that concept a little bit better, in the fact that the basis is basically zero that we're going from?
Well, correct.
And do we have to reevaluate that then, and say, if it was commercial, or if it was something, this is what it would be?
So, so this, and you can see, this is the, the value of the, what was the Nature Sunshine piece.
Right.
And so, has the properties already transferred? It's no longer being held by the city. At some point, the county's going to come in and assign a value to that. And that will show up in a later iteration of this here, and the market, you know, because of the land market value, there are no improvements on either one, so the, the base year value is only going to be the land value.
And so, Nature, I mean, the, the medical school is not going to come in and say, your basis is zero because you weren't getting any taxes to begin with. It will be assessed as to what the county actually said. Perfect, that's great.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're not going to go in and argue that, it's, so the nice thing is that the school district will see an immediate benefit, you know, even, even if the project area never gets adopted, the school district gets an immediate benefit because now they have roughly 20 acres of property that wasn't on the tax roll, that will come on the tax roll. Okay? We will see, obviously, the city would see a portion of that as well, but the school district would be the main beneficiary of that. So, here's, I eliminated some and blew it up, and it didn't help what it, one bit. So this is a, an estimate of, yeah, so you can see here, this is the housing component. This would be the housing component. We put in this base year, so we've asked them for their estimates of value as it moves forward, and this is, this, that's this number here. And then it's automatically increased by 2% per year. That, you can tweak that number, you can play with it, we can set it to zero and see what, you know, if it never comes. But they start off with 32 million, and they drop, you know, goes up a little bit here, goes up here, and then it's just a natural increase of 2% through year 12. And this would be the tax rates of the city, the county, and the school district down here. And so what we have done is, based on things that have happened in the past, we would say that the city would provide 85% of the increment that it gets, that tracks to this number out here, so a total of 1.6, off the 1.9, so that there would be some cap for administration of the redevelopment agency, plus, because this is a new project area, 10% of the tax increment's going to have to go to housing. We would be putting that into there. Here's the county's numbers, we ballpark that at 75%, and then 75% as well for the school district. And so for the housing component, based on what they build up here, again, this is all predicated on what they construct up here, this is, these are the numbers, and that would be 12 million over the 12 years, or discounted at 5%, it comes at $5.5 million.
Didn't I hear that the golf course project, wasn't that 1.5 million?
Yes, but this is for the housing component. This is benefit area one.
Oh, one.
We go back to, back to the first chart, or the first picture, second picture we had up there, it's benefit area one. So whatever they put on there, and right now they're saying that ultimately they're going to have about 120 million in investment on that piece. So based on that, this is how the model flows out. This is benefit area two. This would be the balance of the medical school, the office buildings, the classroom buildings, the laboratories, and all of the other associated development. Again, the only number I have right now, I'm sorry, is the base year number, so I've stuck that in there to kind of show. This will obviously go up because once the county assesses a value on the property, that number gets plugged into here, and the numbers will then flow down. So, you can see that for the first two years, they have nothing because they won't be able to get on the property to put anything into it. So starting in year three, they're starting here with 52 million, and they come back in, in year six, and they add another 30, in year eight, they add another 28 million. So as it flows out, they end up with about 116 million worth in improvements on the property. And as it flows down, you can see down here that the school district, this is the money that they would get. Again, we're, we're saying that they're going to keep 25%. Typically, we refer to that as a pass-through payment, so... So in addition to the base year allotment, we're saying that the county, the school district would also get a pass-through payment of 25% of the tax increment. So we're not trying to keep all of it. The nice thing about this is since we're talking about a million seven in improvements, we gave ourselves a little bit of a cushion to, you know, a million five to a million seven. You reach that with this flow down here, this is the total of the flows, you reach that in about four years, if this all works out. And so that means the way that the typical interlocal agreements with the school districts have done in the past, they'd like to have a maximum cap for a year. So if we go to them and say, we're doing this for a million seven or 10 years, whichever comes first, this projection says that in four years, that tax flow would change and they would get the benefit of all the taxes. Tax increment on that portion of benefit area two, that portion would cease. And then the school district and the other tax entities then recoup all of the taxes. Including the city, correct.
What's the total city portion across all 12 years?
For this one?
About 1.2?
Uh, yes, 1.2. School district, you know, because they get 66% of the tax, property tax dollar, that's why theirs is significantly higher.
6.
6.5. And if you took a net present value at 5% back over the 12, or over the 12 years, it comes out to 5.3.
So we've run over time a little bit. What are, what would you like to see between now and this discussion?
What we are asking for you is to approve this resolution that would start the process to be moved to the next council, the next council meeting.
Discussion among council members? Let me start off then. So, you know, I appreciate the discussion at the beginning. I think, you know, we've kind of committed to working towards the first benefit area. So that seems to me pretty straightforward. I love the golf course proposed improvements and what we're trying to do. I love that, that's wonderful. I still, I feel I've made it a little bit better after the presentation. I'm still not certain that I'm comfortable with using tax increment this way. I feel like in the past, it's been, here's a project that won't happen unless we figure out some way of incentivizing it. And since by having this project, we're going to grow our economic development, therefore let's take some of that future economic growth and use that to incentivize it. So now it happens, it wouldn't have otherwise happened, but we'll use the money that we gain from it to make sure that it does happen. Where it seems like the medical school is coming, so we're not, we're not, we're not making it happen because we're using TIF this way, but we're saying it's coming and now we're going to pull the tax coming from that and we're going to invest that in recreational facilities.
And that's the question I go back to is, would that come without that? And I look at the economic benefit and potential of that, there is possibility that this TIF is actually an investment in the future, which would ultimately pay off.
So we're saying that by having the enhanced golf course, then that will in itself generate more economic development. Part of this is also, we're asking the school district to do this. We're basically saying, school district, you're going to be getting X number of dollars increment because the medical school's going in. Now we're going to ask you to take those dollars that would be funding our kids' education and divert it to golf course enhancements. I guess the argument is that these golf course enhancements may generate more money in the future, just not tax, not property taxes, but just broad general economic.
Well, in addition to the broader economic impact, one thing that this does for not only the school district, but also for the universities, is it enhances their ability to provide golf as a recreation and instructional opportunity. So both Tempe U High and Provo High School use this course for their golf teams. And I believe, does Utah Valley have a golf team? And they practice here as well. So Brigham Young University and Utah Valley University have their golf teams that practice here. And with the lighted course, as I understand it, not only does it give the general public the chance to extend their play, but it also gives the universities the chance to extend their offerings. So they could now offer golf courses that could be in the evening and spring and summer for interested parties that could take it. So it kind of prolongs their playing season as well.
Right. $6.6 million for enhanced golf programs at school.
Well, again, I'd like to, if I go back to this, what I, if, if the math works out, this would end after year, year six.
Fair enough. I thank you for pointing that out. Just one more thing and then I'll, you'll go for it. Again, I love, I love the idea of doing the golf and I love the creative thinking of how can we pay for this because it's always difficult to find funding for this. Just throwing out my thought process, if we could come up with 1.2 million over 12 years and just divert our tax increment from this project and not ask the school district to divert theirs, I'm just, that's just an idea, I'm just throwing it out there. But just, I don't know how the school district's going to respond. I think we would ask, is it even legal? And then permissible, I should say. And then are they, would they?
Yes. So we have provided, I provided Ms. Bryant, her business administrator, I gave her our attorneys in Salt Lake, all their contact information. I know that she's been fairly busy with a lot of things. I'm not sure that she's had the chance to talk to them yet. She certainly intends to. And, you know, we just ballpark 75% because, I mean, that's certainly not carved in stone. Individual taxing entities can choose to participate at a lower rate. There have been instances where one taxing entity has not, for whatever reason, has opted not to participate in a project area. That happened in the downtown area once, the county didn't sign an interlocal agreement where the school district did. So, I mean, there are a number of scenarios that could play out here. Certainly not the least of which is that we could reduce this from 75 to 50 or another number.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So what we're talking about is tax dollars. And you're right, most of it would go to the school district. But here, the way I'm looking at it is we're providing something for the community that the whole community benefits from, but you could say that the schools in particular benefit because they have programs that would use this facility. If you think of the soccer complex on the west side, the county saw enough benefit in that for the community to invest, it was millions of dollars. Often when we do a TIF and we are using this, using these taxpayer funds to subsidize or augment something, it's going to some developer. And, you know, maybe you get community benefit, maybe you don't. You hope you do, I suppose, otherwise why would you do it? But, you know, maybe we're trying to spur economic development downtown, maybe we want someone to be the first. So there's reasons. But here, I think it's coming to us. It's not going to someone else's bottom line.
I have one first one, I am very, I am in support of this. And I think that the question that comes back to the council is that this tax increment financing, are we as a council feeling that this is the best use of those funds to go back to the golf course or should we put it into sewer lines or water lines? Because we are making a determination of where we feel the greatest benefit of this money will come from, will go to from the golf course. So I think that's up to us. Is this benefit, this TIF going to help the community, which is going to help the community most? Sewer lines or a golf course? And we get to decide that. We have to get to decide that.
Yeah, see some hands over here.
Well, one question that I think is still a little bit vague in my own mind, I think this was explained to me last time we talked about this, but maybe you could rehearse this for me again.
Sure.
But it seems like there was, there was a public understanding that there were going to be improvements made to the golf course as a result of the deal. Those improvements, as I recall, you were explaining that there are some improvements that the medical school has already given.
So let me, let me clarify my language and that's my fault. I should probably say improvements, meaning replacement holes on this side, enhancements, which would be what Brett and Scott are talking about with the lighted course and the snagged course.
But that's all coming from the TIF.
That is coming from the TIF. These improvements, which would be the replacement holes, are not.
That was not, right. No, that I understood.
Okay.
Yeah, I was actually thinking, I mean, I just remember, I just remember in the tense, in the tension of the moment, right, when, when the public was really upset that we were contemplating selling, you know, a portion of a public park and so on, and there was Now, I, I thought the medical school itself was sort of offering some way of not just, and maybe I'm mis, maybe it's coming back to me now, I remember we requested this, but I don't know that they agreed to it. But we were, we were sort of interested, oh yeah, of course we want the replacement holes, but is there any way to improve the driving range? Is there any way to improve the facility there? Do you remember this?
There was a lot of things discussed.
Yeah.
And that was one of them. And if the medical school is here today and they're not, and I'll represent them briefly for a second, if I can take a privilege, is the taxes they're paying would pay for those things. Otherwise, they'll just go to the black hole, sorry, that's the general fund, and to the school district and to the county. This is a way of taking some of the direct money that they're paying, and if they were here today, they would say, yes, we're fine with however you want to use our taxes here in this tax increment deal. We would request that you approve our request up here for benefit area one, but benefit area two, if you choose, could go directly to fund the additional requests that they're making. Otherwise, those requests would either come in, in the form of a supplemental request to the budget process or just not at all.
Well, okay, so the reason I'm asking that is because it seems to me that maybe one condition of the justification for this TIF, which I generally am sympathetic to your concerns, Dave, but maybe one justification for it is that that was, that was part of the public conversation that there were, that we were going to try to assure the public that the, the course was not only going to get the replacement holes, but that there were going to be some improvements on the course. And I remember that we were hoping that they would just, you know, offer a million dollars to the course and say, here, here's your cash, do with it as you please. But, but I think at least for me, this feels like one way to, in lieu of that option, which is no longer available to us, but in lieu of that, it seems like this is one way to sort of reassure the public that we heard them, this is, this is, we've got this new set of holes and we've got some improvements that make this public park even better.
They're going to pay the taxes one way or another, what you do with them. The one thing that was very clear was that there was going to be, if there was tax increment from this, it was not going to this. And I think Mr. Van Buren, you were pretty adamant that you weren't real interested in doing that. Again, so any taxes here would be going for this, not that.
Mr. School?
I feel like this would be a good investment. I feel like it would make the golf course even more economically productive than it is and bring more people from outside the area to just a state-of-the-art attraction. So there's economic benefits from that. And then there's the educational benefits, good advantage. So I'm a favorite.
Also would be a favor of the proposal, I would go in favor, and I think it's a wonderful use of the resource that's there.
Okay. Okay, we are.
I'm calling.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave, yes.
Couple of things. We did talk about that. There was a lot of negotiation, a lot of comments about there needs to be some enhancements to take those holes and put them over there that just aren't in the three holes. There needed to be some money spent there. And there was a lot of discussions saying the medical school should be responsible for that. We lost that argument. We lost that in the negotiation. That went away. So now we have a proposal to take tax money that'll be collected one way or another, take that tax money and put on enhancements to the golf course. Now, the general public that we had convinced that we can get three new holes and the golf course will be whole, but along with that, but now we're coming back to the general public and saying, well, that is true, but we're going to take a billion and a half dollars of your taxes and put it back into the golf course. And we all know there's a whole bunch of places that that dollars can go. Now, it may sound like I'm arguing against this, and I kind of am, and I've been, as far as supporting this golf course, but I'm, I'm having a hard time hitting up our general taxpayers to pay for something we could negotiate and make a deal with the medical school. And that caused some recent grief. I also, and this is really quite part of our argument or our discussion today, but it is a little bit, that on the Nature Sunshine property, using tax increment, which we agreed to do, it's in the contract, it was in the discussions, I didn't agree with it at the time, but it's there, to build student housing. But as far as I can hear from what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, the student housing now has turned into an 800-unit apartment building. And are we going to use tax increment to pay for apartment buildings? Is that student housing? Is it just more multifamily housing? I don't know. So I'm having, I'm having grief with this. And I'd love to see the golf course get some improvements. But I, it's just contrary to what the arguments were at the time, the discussion at the time, we made the whole deal here and, anyway, so I'm, I'm very undecided right now.
Question for Scott. So this is an investment in the golf course, which will make it better and bring in more revenue. So any projections on that revenue? And you know, here we're saying next many years, we're going to put 1.2 million of city money, specific TIF, into this. Do we have any projections on what the likely economic benefit?
Recouping.
Yeah, recouping that over time because you would be pulling in more money.
We, since we have the self-sustaining golf course, we haven't applied operational revenues towards a debt service. And we could, we could look at that if that's where the council wants to go. It's an interesting storyline for this project to me that, you know, it was out of our meetings, which have been very cooperative with the medical school and the development, that where this idea came. And I realize there, it's the medical school that brought up the suggestion, but why don't you use some of this towards improving the golf course? And maybe that's because it was maybe not part of the negotiations. But it really, the way I look at it, and of course I have a Parks and Recreation tainted view on things, but this land was part of the golf course and as part of this, and we're still making the golf course whole, but the opportunity of that land and availability was made possible by it operating as a golf course in that site. So I see where Kay is going, but I think that's where, to me, it creates that connection between the use of that land and the development of that land towards making the facility that held the stewardship of that land for quite some time, making it even better at the end. And that's where I talk about that win-win solution.
And it's generating tax that was not there from the school in the first place.
Right. You know, so even.
It's not as much.
Just by the sale of the land now, that is a taxable 21 acres now, you know, just by that simple sale, it has gone from a public facility to a private facility.
I don't think it resolves everything Kay was talking about, and I think we've kind of touched it, but just to emphasize that.
of touched it, but just to emphasize that, that this is, this is tax money that could go to other things, but it is also tax money that would not be there but for the deal. So I do see that as partly answering the concern and saying, because we were willing to do this deal with them, we get some extra money that we can use towards this, and it's not, it's not taking any money that, that would have been available to go to anyone else had we not done the deal with the medical school. So that to me helps mitigate some of that concern.
It's how you do tax increment, you're hoping that, tending on getting more back than you give away in income. I think this certainly has the potential to do that. I think over the long term, this could be a great boon to that, to develop that area of the city. And so whatever you give them, I think we're going to get back additional tax over, over a period of time.
We're not, we're not talking the medical school, we're talking the enhancements in the golf course.
Understand.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify, I'm just, I'm trying to.
I think the golf course itself is going to generate a lot of additional revenue for the city.
I think that's an important point, is that we're not only looking at property tax, we are looking at an income tax as well, as potential.
Income tax?
Sales tax.
Sales tax. Sales tax, sorry, yeah.
And just revenue.
It's close to the 15, so I'll.
I meant sales tax, thank you.
If I could, if you could share, I, I appreciate Mr. Van Buren bringing up the, the student housing. Just from our conversation at the beginning, it sounded like, it seemed like everyone was in agreement that the original concept for the residential portion was for student housing. And I have heard some rumbling that it's going to go for something that's not, that really shouldn't be considered student housing, not, not related to this medical school. And so before, before approving that, I think I'd like to just make sure we're all on the same page. And if they want to make another proposal, I mean, I will end up listening to it, but, but my understanding has been that this would be for housing connected to the medical school, not just a general housing project. And so I would, I'd like to make sure I'm on, you know, that I'm not mistaken on that, perhaps before moving forward with that, that first part. And then, and then the second part, yeah, the general fund might be a black hole, but it sounds like. Normally, we would pay for these kind of things out of that black hole as well. And it seems like if we don't, if we weren't to do this, I think it needs to be funded, we just need to figure out how to fund that, and that probably would come out of that black hole. And it would, it would, it would compete against the, the other competing projects like they, they always do, and, and you know, the best ones rise to the top. But if, if we want to, you know, if we want to do the increment on here, and you know, it sounds like there's probably more support on the council for that, even, you know, even with my opposition, which is fine, it would, it'll be interesting, I think, to talk to our partners and see how comfortable they are in, in diverting their increment. Because again, I, I feel like this is city recreation and it should be paid for through city funds. And I, I'm still uncomfortable asking the school district. You know, maybe they say, okay, well, you're going to do these programs, we'll, we'll pitch in 5% or 10%, but I guess that's up to them, they can, they can make that decision.
I just emphasize the item that we are asking you to consider, which would be on the, if, if you agree to put it on the next, it's just, it's just the kickoff point. None of this, you know, none of these percentages that I had put now. I just. Yeah, it's just, it's just saying, hey, we agree that you can go out and explore, that you can start the process and start the public meetings and start the dialogue. You're not, you as a city council are not putting anything into mo, in, in action that says, yeah, we're going to, we're going to only give you seven, you know, county, city or school, you're only getting 25%. County, you're only getting 25%. We're going to just sweep the rest of it off the table. That's, this is simply for illustrative purposes and based on some history that we've had with other, with other projects in the past.
What I understand, what I believe in my mind we're doing in a couple of weeks is just creating boundary lines, rather than.
Pretty much.
For an area that is potentially a.
So you, it's kind of, it's a survey area, which in this case happens to be coterminous with the two parcels that are under. Control of the, the school board, or the school that, too many schools. The medical school and the, and the housing component. You could certainly have a larger study area and then whittle, you know, you could have a larger study area, survey area and whittle that down as the final, if you adopt the final plan. None of this was meant to suggest that these will be the final percentages as we move forward and go through this process and adopt a project area and then adopt interlocal agreements with the affected taxing entities. We'll have the opportunity to discuss, have some give and take on all of those subjects.
I'm comfortable moving forward, especially if we can get some answers to some of these questions.
Sure.
Presumably getting answers to what the kind of housing unit we're talking about would be really helpful, because I would not, I would not like it to be just general housing. I think that would not be in the spirit of what we thought we were going to. But if, but if approving the, the process at this point to go forward doesn't prevent us at a later point to say, no, that's not, that's not what we want.
Right, no, no.
Is that a motion?
I move that we, I don't know what the wording should be. I move that we move forward.
Place this item on.
And place this item.
Council meeting for the 23rd.
On the council meeting for the 23rd.
Question on, on that, Ben? Are you going to be involved with the school? Because I think the school district, because they're going to need to answer a lot of questions that will help us between now and the 23rd.
I have forwarded some of these spreadsheets to Ms. Bryant, and I'd be more than happy to go before the school board and, when they have time and, and talk to them directly. I know that she's been looking at, at when this could get slotted into their schedule. In fact, it was Ms. Bryant that suggested that we, since we had the joint meeting a week ago that, or a half ago, that we take advantage of that and speak to the school board at the same time. So that was her thought, since their timeframe's a little tight right now, so.
And just for clarification, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, this motion is to place the item of the redevelopment agency regarding the creation of a redevelopment area near the East Bay's golf course is, is what we're going to put on.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just a real quick question. So Dixon, are you aware of any rationale why maybe the focus of the housing has changed from student housing to something else? What's the nature, how long do they count it stay? Is it short-term, is it long-term?
Well, it'll be a four-year medical school. And then eventually Rocky Mountain University Health Professions will also move their campus off the old Novell campus onto this property, so it'll be both facilities there. And they felt that having 750 housing units for their students, that close in proximity would be a lesser burden on the community than having it spread out throughout the community and having it right next to their campus. And at this point, even though I kind of spoke on their behalf a little earlier, it'd probably be good to have them come back and explain in greater detail. There's no doubt that this has expanded beyond what they had originally proposed. They had proposed housing from the very beginning, not that much. This is newer coming forward with what they have, but probably good to have them come and speak more to what they're doing on the housing.
So as long as they have enough housing for their needs, I'm not sure that extra housing, depending on what it is, is a bad thing considering our housing.
Yeah, so it's, it's 750, 800 units, it's on a freeway interchange, it's not anyone's neighborhood, it's next to our shopping areas, it's next to our golf course, it's next to other businesses like the former Novell campus. So again, if you're going to have, if there was no medical school and all this and said, what should we do with this eight acres? And someone came in and said, let's do housing, again, my first choice would be retail, of course, but that wasn't proving out too well. But it'd be good to have them come in and address it.
So I think this is good conversation to have, I'd like to see their proposal, but we are entering minute 63 of the 30-minute item. So unless there's objections, let's, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor? Thank you. Mr. Walter? We will now move on to item number three, which is. Oh, yes, please.
New George is doing a good job on motions.
Thank you.
Just learning from the master.
So item three is a discussion on the street right-of-way typical cross-sections and their use in the transportation master plan update. This will be presented by Mr. David Graves, director of our engineering division. This item is budgeted for 30 minutes. If you could shave five off of that, we'd be very appreciative after our last item.
We'll do our best to do that. Thank you, Mr. Harding, members of the council. We appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with the council about this subject. We've had a consultant who's been working very hard on our transportation master plan for about the last year, detailed public meetings. We've had a couple of meetings with the T-Mac committee, with the planning commission, and presented much of the same information. There's also been a lot of discussion amongst staff and other departments with developers and others in the community through our public meeting process about our street cross-sections and, you know, where should we go with those? Are they adequate the way they are? Or do we need to make some modifications? So I'm going to go ahead and turn the time over to Vern Kiesler. Vern is the manager with Paramount Ricks, who has been heading up our transportation master plan. And he'll talk about the street cross-sections and then if we have any time, we'll take some questions.
I just wanted to give extra kudos to Vern. He has extra credentials that makes him qualified, in my opinion, because you, what were your previous duties at Provo City?
I was a long-range planner here for eight years, and transportation planner for eight years in the community. Worked on Ameresture, worked with David Knack as our general plan, special task force that time. Familiar with Provo a little bit. Good afternoon, Eric Catusi, and members of the city council. Today, we're going to just briefly talk about cross-sections. And every, we do a lot of transportation master plan for communities, and cross-sections tend to be one of those things that hijack the planning process and transportation master plan, because everybody's very passionate about the street in front of their home. Some people believe that the, well, most all of us believe that people go too fast, right? But we also see a lot of things that happen. Some say it's too wide, some say it's too narrow, so we see a lot of different things. Provo's been very progressive in adopting street standards that are neighborhood-friendly and that, so we're going to talk about just a few of those and just show you in the neighborhoods. So this is some of the street standards, the T-intersections instead of the four-way traffic intersections. We're seeing bulb-outs here, which is less width that a pedestrian or bicyclist has to cross over in a neighborhood. We see the neck down here, which doesn't necessarily mean that, that the driver brakes, but they certainly take their foot off the accelerator when the road narrows, okay? So they're not accelerating, which is a good thing. And so, and the turning radio is awesome, right? You have to really slow down. You can't drive 25 or 35 and make these corners. You have to slow down and make an objective turn. So here's some of the, a neighborhood that has some of those in there. And they're all over. I just highlighted one here that illustrates that three-way intersection with the neck down of the street cross-section. They're all over, you can see them. And Provo's had these standards for many years. Many communities are just now beginning to get the picture about this.
Yes, sir. So this is a picture in Provo?
Yes, these are all Provo pictures.
And, and the, the street cross-section, the one that you showed us earlier, that's already in our.
That's already in your standards, okay?
Thank you.
Let's go to the next one. T-standards, okay? So this is a going to the local to a collector standard instead of a local to a local. So you'll see that on this local, or on the collector street, there's no neck down on this one, okay? But you still have the local cross-section here, and you still have the turning radio that narrows it down. And here's an example of that. Well, I believe this is in southeast, I'm sorry, southwest Provo, okay? Moving on, we talk about roundabouts. Sometimes four-way intersections aren't always the, the best, they tend to get busy, and the next thing you know, we have an all-way stop or a two-way stop, then an all-way stop, then a signal, okay? So Provo's taken and saying, if you're going to have some four-way and roundabouts, that we want to slow traffic, we want to calm traffic, we want, and, and so they designed a roundabout. And here's one on 1460 North and 1730 North is probably what we were up, and then a cross-section of a local street. So Provo does have some very good street standards in place. Now, the width of the street standards is another option, another discussion already. So Provo has three local streets. They have the collector street, and then they have two arterial streets that are currently adopted. And this is the standards that when developers come in, this is what they need to adhere to. Traffic studies usually determine what's the size of the local street or if they have to build to collector standard, okay? Some might even abut an arterial road.
Question?
Yes, sir.
On the smallest local street, that offers parking on one or both sides?
On the smallest local street currently, that doesn't allow parking but on one side or no sides right now. Shane, is it zero sides or one side?
Zero.
Zero sides. What we're going to advocate is being able to park on one side. That makes a tough decision with the city. I won't park in on my side that, you know, so we'll get to that in just a second. So those are the, these are the proposed cross-sections that we're going to go. So I don't, that we're recommending that you don't. We've met with T-Mac, the Transportation Mobility Advisory Committee, twice now. We've been in from a planning commission twice now. Deborah Jensen from our planning commission is sitting in on this. And we've also met with our public work staff, our engineering staff, and they have met with city leadership on this. So let's go to the, the summary slide. That's probably going to be the best slide to get to. Okay. Cross-sections, right-of-way width. Here's what we're proposing. One of the things that Provo's been unique on for a few years is having a sidewalk in the public utility easement outside the city right-of-way. That's been problematic on a couple of situations, dealing with setbacks, dealing with longer vehicles that now makes for a shorter driveway, extend and protrude out into the sidewalk. We all see it, right? So one of the things we'd like to do is put that sidewalk back into the city right-of-way. So we're recommending that we increase the local street from 42 to 54 feet in the right-of-way width. And I have cross-sections to go through with you in just a minute. Go from the median local street from 50 to 60 feet and from 56 to 60 feet per right-of-way. With the collector streets, we go 72 to 80, and arterial 84, we're actually decreasing this one, 84 to 80, that would be our minor arterial. And our major arterial goes from 120 to 128. So pavement width, that's what people really get involved in. Of course, our development community gets involved in the right-of-way. And I think we'd be, just some outreach that we've done, we've had a couple of public open houses, Metaphusie's been there, Dave, I've seen you there before. And we're getting good feedback from the development community on getting that sidewalk back put in the city right-of-way and not on the private property in the public utility easement. But people, this is where everybody has an opinion, right? And that is the width of our, our, our streets. So we're going to recommend that the small local streets stay at 24 feet of pavement width, that we're allowed for parking on one side or the other, but not both sides of the street. We want to decrease our median local street from 32 to 30 feet, and our large local street from 38 to 36. This is a decrease in width. Some people say we went too far. Some people will say we didn't go far enough. I think we're at a great location, a nice happy medium. And we'll show you those streets. On our collector, decrease from 50 to 50, from 54 down to 50. And then arterial streets, 66 down to 50 and 90 down to 78. So let's get to the cross-sections. This is the pictures you want to see, right? Yes, sir.
You said that the first one, the, the first local streets, that would allow parking on one side.
Yes.
The, the medium one, the one, the one that dropped to 30, would that allow parking on both sides?
Yes, that's correct. From here on, allow parking on both sides of the street, unless you don't have parking at all on a busy arterial street or commercial area. Yes, sir.
So help me understand that. And generally in a parking lot, you'll say a parking space is nine feet. So if you've got 30 feet and you're dividing it four-way, that gives you seven and a half feet per vehicle, basically.
Yeah, we count the curb and gutter pan. We don't count the curb, but we'll count the pan for. We don't count the curb, but we'll count the pan for parking standards. It's a common practice across the U.S., okay? Let's go to our cross-sections. So, the top is going to be your existing cross-section, and the bottom is going to be your proposed city cross-section. Notice that the sidewalk is currently outside of the right-of-way. Here, it will be inside the right-of-way. One thing that we've done after meeting with city staff and Dave Decker is a seven-foot planar street consistent across the entire cross-sections. Now, we get seven feet of planar strip. That, that's pretty positive. If they get too big, they become problematic, right? If they're too small, three and four feet, it's hard to plant a tree in three or four-foot cross-sections. People sometimes like trees in the park strips. So, I think we've balanced that pretty well. We've had some planning commissions in the past, and I'll speak his name because he really liked big park strips. That was Roy Peterman, way back in the day when I served as staff to the Planning Commission. We had some large park strips. If you have some small ones, like I have in front of my house in another city that I live in, three feet is not enough. I don't have any trees in my park strip because three feet's not big enough. So, let's go on to the next one. I'll go... Kind of go through these a little quicker because it sounds like we need to make up a little time. Here's your medium local cross-street pavement width narrows, as we talked about, from 32 down to 30 feet. And we get that sidewalk in all of these back into the right-of-way. Going to the... Going to the third local street, again, we increase our right-of-way width, but we decrease our pavement width. Going to our Collector standard?
Can I ask an ignorant question?
Yes.
While you're pausing there for just a second, I mean, are we talking about something that is for future streets? There's no way to impose this, right, on everything that exists right now?
Yeah, this would apply to all future development when it comes into Provo and do their subdivision processes or their commercial site planning.
Is there, is there any way in which, if a proposed construction or happens on a particular street, that you can sort of capture some pre-existing streets or maybe particularly about the right-of-way? Is there any way in which that gets shifted when...
The city buys right-of-way all the time, right? We see that when we expand right-of-way. The answer to that is it depends on the reconstruction of the roadway. Sometimes the curb and gutter is just fine on a roadway, and we have Public Works, let's say, we... Public Works has to go in and reconstruct the street from road bays and asphalt and everything. If the curb and gutter's fine, they're probably not going to modify that curb and gutter, just increase the cost so much more. So, I think what we have is fine, but future standards would be modified. And we've seen this from the downtown city plat, from the 1800s, all the way up from 1849, all the way up to what we have today, right? And so, standards change over time, and sometimes it's, it's hard. We have to check the records to make sure where the property line is and the right-of-way in that particular neighborhood. Let's... Yeah, I did go to Collector for it. Okay, so we have a Collector Street, and listen, I want to bring to your attention, 54 feet down to 50 feet. When we, when we decrease the width of the pavement, there are compromises that we make. We may not be able to get a five-lane cross-section in that 50-foot Collector Street, okay? So, we do make some concessions, if you will. However, maybe you get a four-lane cross-section or a three-lane cross-section with a great median. Maybe you get a three-lane cross-section with bike infrastructure on that particular road. And so, we're narrowing that down four feet. We think that's pretty good, but some people would like it narrower, others people would like it wider. Let's go up to the arterial. You currently have two arterial streets. We want to maintain a minor arterial street. That's very important for regional significance in mountainous association of governments' travel demand model, because that opens the door for continued funding for regionally significant roads for communities, especially Provo. So, we want to maintain, but we're going to keep it at a Collector width standard. One of the big things that we hear is a lot of traffic, most of the traffic is speedy, that type of thing. But not in all neighborhoods, okay? It doesn't make sense to, to, to put a local street in a high-density neighborhood or a neighborhood where we have commercial land uses. Finally, I keep pointing this the wrong way. Here's our major arterial street. This one was the lone arterial, the lone cross-section where the sidewalk was actually in the right-of-way. We continue to keep that one in the right-of-way, and we add a potential for a buffer on either side. In traffic analysis world, we call that a clear zone, but that could be a trail on one side or the other. It could be combined, depending on the right-of-way, like Lakeview Parkway or something to that effect. Lots of things go into lane widths, speed. These are all different types of things that traffic studies report and that your engineering staff looks at and requires to meet the demand of the traffic. Here's some of the bikeway infrastructure types. To my right is the most infrastructure, and to the left is the least infrastructure. So, you could just have a... Someone riding their bike on a roadway. Could be a striped lane, it could be a route, it could be grade separated, it could be a buffer bike ring. There's all different types of infrastructure. It's not a one-size-fits-all. That's what's great about this, is that there's flexibility. One-size-fits-all, doesn't work. Medium treatment types, we've all seen them. You have a fifth one now in Provo, and it's on University Avenue with UVX. I was going by a station site last week when I was down here meeting with Dave and the group, and it was raining, and there was 15 people standing in the middle of that roadway at the station site ready to catch the next UVX bus. That's exciting. That's exciting. Then we developed some cross-section guidelines for development, for community development and for engineering staff in the new department that gets formed. What we're seeing is how do you determine what type of local street? Is it going to be that narrow one with parking on one side or no parking, depending on the capacity of that? Is it going to be the middle street or is it going to be the bigger street? And this gives some guidelines. You don't want a developer coming in and saying, "No, we can get away with building the smallest street," when the traffic study says, "No, you need to build the larger local I hate to bore you with... This kind of goes back a while, but 1,400 trips per day is... Between that 1,400 and 1,800 is a great number for our local streets. It gets above 2,000, and it changes the character dynamic of that roadway. We did some research and looked at a lot of different cities throughout the state of Utah and looked at their average right-of-way width and looked at their pavement width. And these are some averages that we did. We showed this to Planning Commission and to our staff, to Public Works staff, and they looked at that. With the new standards, we're going to be right there, okay? It'll be right there, 29 to 32 feet. We're going to have 24 to 36, right there, depending on the size of that local street. That's all I have. I know you're going to have questions, but we hope to make up a little of your time. Dave?
Let me just make one comment on the slide that Vern had that talked about the selection of criteria for different, different streets. The consultant working with staff has done a lot of work in this regard to go back and look at national standards. Some of the, the things that we've struggled with over the past 15 or 20 years have been some of these numbers, some of these street widths seem somewhat arbitrary. And, and so, one of the things that we asked the consultant to do was, was to develop some criteria for us, but we also did some research on our own, looking at this and said, "Okay, what... Are there some standards out there that we can follow, that we have confidence in, that makes sense, that can help us get to a reasonable solution?" And, and what we found, one of those standards is, is the ASHTO guidelines, which we actually have already adopted in our Provo City standard, and it fits beautifully within many of these recommendations that are coming out of the consultant studies. So, we're, you know, we're feeling pretty confident in, in the work that they've done, that there, there really is some justification of why we are or we aren't.
Question?
Yeah, so besides the complete streets, traffic calming, being more pedestrian-bike friendly, less roadway width means a savings for the city over time, because we don't have to repave that portion that... Because it's smaller.
Less treatment, too. After you do repave, the next year, when you go in and give it its treatment to last longer, it's less square footage of that as well. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'd be really curious as to see where some of these roads that we already... Are there any that are really out of character? I look at Bulldog right now and think, what we're doing out of there, now that becomes in these guidelines, and yet, that was such a huge change for the people around. We expect to see... Are there other streets in our community that we expect these standards to greatly impact like Bulldog? And I'd be curious as to which ones they are.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's any that have popped out and said, "Oh, this, this one really should be done," but there may be some that might come up. But it'll be easy to, to take these standards and say, you know, do they fit within the guidelines?
Oh, and the other thing that you're mentioning now is future. We're not dealing with the past. We're dealing with future, so that makes a big difference. Thank you.
We've got an 800 North corridor that is likely to be redone at some point. You know, applying the new standards for that corridor makes a lot of sense.
That helps.
Just in a nutshell, differences between NACTO and ASHTO?
ASHTO is the engineering world-accepted practice. And so, ASHTO is adopted, the ASHTO Green Book, which is the engineering... It has a real name. I just call it the ASHTO Green Book. And the city has adopted that, and we encourage many communities to adopt it. UDOT adopts that ASHTO Green Book standards as well on an annual basis or whenever they go through that process, except for they have some modifications for school zones and sometimes railroad crossings.
And then what's... Does NACTO have standards or is that...
So, NACTO is a policy?
That's actually federal, kind of federal standard, whereas NACTO is guidelines. It hasn't been adopted yet as kind of an official overall policy standard. It's more still guidelines. That may change in the future, but right now, it's not an overall parking policy on, on street or bicycle, all that full design yet.
All right. So, ASHTO...
Let me talk to you afterwards. ASHTO is the national standard, NACTO is a guideline, guidelines. Okay, good. Now, I wasn't able to attend the T-MAC meeting today because I was in this meeting, but the previous one was at... In, in the memo that we got, it said that, you know, the input had been collected from, from T-MAC, Planning Commission, and been incorporated. Did some of that feedback come in today? I mean, I'm just... I'm, I'm curious, you know, where... How, how... What was T-MAC's thoughts on this and the Planning Commission's thoughts on this? If I could turn to this... Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, I've, I've seen this presentation several times now, and it's been brought to both the Planning Commission and T-MAC as it's developed over time. I think initially, there was a lot of desire from the Planning Commission in particular for narrow street widths and not quite as strongly from the T-MAC group. I think overall, through the process that we've discussed, the street sections to great extent. And one of the things, one of the reasonings behind wanting the narrow street sections was for safety, pedestrians, bikes, as well as speeding cars, and also to reduce maintenance and construction costs of our roadways over time. I'd say that from a Planning Commission standpoint, on board with the compromises that have been made, I think there are probably, as Vern said, some people who would like to see the streets narrower, and some people who are okay with them being wider. I think the biggest concern that comes out of the Planning Commission is something that was touched on briefly here, and that is, how can we proceed over time to retrofit some of our existing streets? Because we do have streets that are just ridiculously wide in residential areas and street...
And it's a great problem to have, right? Because you've got extra right-of-way, we don't know what type of transportation infrastructure in the developed that's in the, in the future, that's going to be created. We have a technology chapter in our Transportation Master Plan draft that we're doing that talks about technology and emerging technologies or disruptive technologies, as we call them. And so, we are on our seventh edition of these cross-sections. We spent two or three in front of staff, we spent two in front of T-MAC and two in front of Planning Commission and trying to balance everybody's interest. We think we're there.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion from the council? And so, you are looking for...
We'll be bringing back the full document as, as we get that written.
Document being the Transportation Master?
So, it'll be part of the Transportation Master Plan. We are having some developers that are coming and saying, "When can we start using these cross-sections?" So, we're, we're working through that right now, but the document will come back hopefully within maybe two months.
Dave, that is one question that I'd like to get a little direction maybe from the council, because if you recall, in December, we adopted development standards, and the cross-sections were one of the question marks that we indicated to the council that had not been completed at that time. And, and really, the question, at least for me, is should we, can we adopt these and get these updated in the construction drawings, the development guidelines, so the developers can move forward using the new cross-sections instead of waiting for the Transportation Master Plan that's going to take a couple more months?
So, have any thoughts on that request?
Oh, definitely. I think it's going to add somehow.
Any objections to...
We definitely don't want to be telling a developer to do it this way when we know the Transportation Plan over here is going to be something different.
Okay. Any, any concerns on that? I don't see any, so that's...
So, if, if that's okay, Dave, I think, I think we could bring this to a regular session for adoption for a mid-year correction, I guess, if you want to look at that for the development.
If that's the case, maybe a motion to bring it to a future council meeting.
Okay, looking for a motion to bring this street cross-sections to a future council meeting. So, move it.
Do you want a date specific for your motion there, council?
I think it needs to go to the Planning Commission first and then come to you, so we'll probably have to look at that schedule.
Your motion is...
I'll, I'll agree, both of you.
No, your, your motion was fine because you didn't specify a date, so...
Okay, yeah, okay. No specific date.
No specific date, but just move it as you see fit. Okay? All in favor on that? Or any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we will jump right into, I'm going to move forward, continued discussion regarding proposed organizational changes presented by me. So, basically, last time, we had scheduled time to hear a presentation and discuss the administration's proposal to reorganize some departments, create a new department. Let's see, let me just read this. I think, I think this just gives it in a nutshell. So, basically, we ran out of time after the presentation, and we didn't have discussion of it. You can see that there were several points, the people that wanted to make the points. So, following an extensive review of the effectiveness of... So, following an extensive review of the effectiveness of the city organizational structure process, the mayor wants to make several changes to streamline and improve development review processes, and better align the city to improve the development experience. Three areas proposed, one, create a new department of development services, two, create a one-stop shop for development review processes, and three, revamp the coordinators' review council. So, we had the presentation, looks like. What's up?
How can we start the organization?
This is the organizational chart for you.
Okay.
The two left, the two left columns are the, are what's being proposed.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So, any, any discussion on the presentation from three weeks ago?
All right. Mr. Sewell?
I think I commented last time, but I, I'm in favor of it, I think it's a good idea, I've seen a need for it, and we've done all the council, you know, the process review committee, and this addresses the problems we saw there much more directly, and I think effectively.
I just had one question, because Dave and Gary and I have been talking about the foothills issue, and we're actually prepared to have a conversation in an upcoming meeting about that. And we were talking about ways to help make sure that all, you know, all parts of the city were talking to each other, and we were talking about maybe going through the CRC with a project proposal for any gravel mining project. I don't want to rush ahead to that conversation, but my question is, as I was reading this over, I didn't have that in mind when we were talking about this three weeks ago, and I can't quite tell if this is any different than, would this still be a process by which we could, if we pinned, pinned something like a project proposal requirement on something like this, that it would go to?
Still fit.
The right agencies, everyone would weigh in, and we would, I mean, I assume so, but I just, I was a little confused about what was.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, that, that process would follow its own course.
So, the CRC itself isn't different in this?
No, only the process of CRC, not what goes there and what doesn't go there, that would not change.
I sent Mr. Parker an email, but my, my first just kind of reaction to it, there were two parts. One was, it was interesting, so we have the proposed Department of Development Services and the one-stop shop, and that seems to be, you know, all about how someone wants to do a development, and from the front door to the back, all kind of together with a little co-location of engineering, but just on that one process. And then the other two parts of that department are economic development and redevelopment. And while those have aspects that may require, you know, a building permit or whatnot, I imagine a lot of what, particularly economic development does, you know, they may be recruiting the company, or helping them expand or whatever, and, and never, never come in for a single, you know, building permit or whatever. So, it, it struck me as interesting that kind of got this core and then a couple of things. But I imagine all departments are, you have to put things somewhere, and sometimes things don't fit very well. And then my other thought was, even community development, community development has sometimes been a bit of a mouthful, and like, how do you shorten it or abbreviate it or whatever? And, you know, I kind of like the departments where it's like the police department or the legal department, nice, real short monitors. And so, the Department of Community and Neighborhood Services, you know, seems, it's a great name for describing what it is, but it, it does seem a little bit, like awkward on that. But again, just a couple, couple of initial thoughts off of that, but any, any other, any other thoughts on this? I think in general, my, my read has been that the council is generally supportive of this direction, and, but let me, let me say that, I mean, if anyone objects, let me know, but the council supports this proposal, and we look forward to, you know, working out the final details and looking forward with it.
I like your, it is a long mouth. I just hope that the neighborhoods realize that they are part of the community, so maybe we could just say community services.
My only concern, as I responded to council member Harding, there is in sort of the municipal world, a definition of community services, and it includes typically things like parks of recreation, parks programs, and, and so my fear was, that if we called it community services, and our residents had come from another place in the country where it's different, they would, they would be confusing. And yet, my first inclination was to call it neighborhood services, but then I worried about the, the neighborhood program. And so, this was sort of the next best thing I could come up with, certainly no pride in authorship, so there's a better way to characterize it, we'd be all over that.
That makes sense. And as I think of community services, I also think of, people like United Way and some of those services too, so, and that's not in our beta book.
So, I like the name. You might be a moron, they use neighborhood services in some capacity.
Yes, so they have neighborhood preservation unit in their police department, yes. Right. It's their code enforcement operation.
All right. There's no other comments?
Our next steps would be to bring you some amendments to Title II, which would implement the change, create the new department and realign the responsibilities. And then the final step in the process will be bringing you a budget proposal in May to create the net new position here. And so, so those would be the next two steps. We, Brian and I talked just a little bit, there are references all through the code that probably need to get adjusted now as a result of this change, and so, that would be a little more, yeah, that'll be a little, probably a little longer coming to, to bring all of the code into alignment, but at least this gets us onto the next step. We'll finish up the job description, go through the process of defining where in, in the grade step system it fits, and, and then we'll, that'll be proposed as a supplemental request in the budget that you'll see in the first week.
Excellent, thank you. Item number five, the discussion regarding the formation of the sign committee. This will be led by Mr. Gary Winterton?
Thank you. We've been working on forming a committee with the challenges that we've had with this sign on University Avenue. And I've talked with Gary McGinn, and as we've gone forward, and the mayor, we have decided that a look at our sign ordinances would be appropriate, and where the core, where we have signs, where we would like signs, and with Bryce's help today, we came up with this mission statement for a sign ordinance review committee. And as of right now, I have invited, I would like to chair this committee, and I've invited Kay and Dave Sewell to join us on that committee. And this would be the council committee. We would include, there are several members of the community that would like to be involved. I've talked with Doug Nielsen, who would really like to be involved within this, and Robert Hammond, who lives in the area of our new sign, and, and yet is a business owner that would really like to be part of the discussion. So, let me read this, review sign ordinances and how they are applied in various areas of the city. Review design corridors and evaluate the current sign ordinance, how the current sign ordinance aligns with the interests of these areas, and evaluate the compatibility of the zones in the surrounding areas. Study how the sign ordinances, ordinance aligns with the general plan, recommend improvements as a result of lessons learned and input from committee members, community development, stakeholders including neighborhoods and business representatives, and then bring legislative recommendations to the council for consideration. And I would like to make a motion that we organize this sign committee, and this is, I, I've talked with the mayor about it, and I've talked with Gary McGinn about it, and they think this is just something that would be very appropriate. It's been 10 years since we talked about this.
The voting members, the committee would be just the council members, other people would be ad hoc.
Absolutely.
Could you state again for the motion, the chair, vice chair?
The chair would be myself, the vice chair, I don't know, I just said members of the committee, maybe we need to designate a, a vice chair. But Kay Van Buuren and Dave Sewell both have agreed to, have expressed an interest in being on the committee, and a willingness to be on the committee. And so, do we need a vice chair?
I think the handbook says that they should designate a vice chair at the time of creation.
Okay, would one of you like to, would, I guess I looked at the council for a vice chair, would either of you like to be on the vice chair, or we can nominate, we can make that?
I'm not for it. I'm a little tails. I don't think I have a question. We nominated Dave Sewell to the vice chair.
Thank you, George. Is there a second? Second by Kay Van Buuren?
A second to George's nomination or to your motion?
Let's, we will make the motion, if it's all right, to have Dave Sewell be the vice chair at this point.
As part of the motion?
Yeah, the motion, yeah, let's make it part of the motion, that Dave Sewell would be the vice chair, with Kay Van Buuren as a, as a member of the committee.
And are we going to incorporate the, can we make comments on the mission statement?
Please, this was.
This is the first time I've seen it, I really, really like it. The only thing I would consider adding to it is, I think enforcement is, you know, a key part of the picture.
A part of it, thank you, I think that's very good.
What do you, what do you think about where it's, in the first sentence, it's just how they are applied, if you just added and enforced, how they're applied?
I think that that's very appropriate. You get that, Bryce?
And enforced, or just you're applying, enforced?
Applied and enforced. Do you want to add the last sentence, bring legislative and enforcement recommendations to the council for consideration, or maybe have the enforcement to the administration, I guess?
Yeah.
I think you've covered that, Mike, you're good.
I think, I think we're okay with that. Thank you, I think that's very good.
Enforcement. Sorry. This is really nippy, but I think you need the and before stakeholders.
Yep.
In your motion, designate the committee as an ad hoc committee.
Thank you, so part of my motion.
Of course, does your second stand in all of the adjustments?
Vice chair, vice chair, this wording for the, for the mission statement and ad hoc committee. I like, I think those are the four things we've added to that motion.
It's like a Frankenstein motion.
Is there any, any concerns, any discussion that you'd like to have, or any advice for this committee as we go forward? I appreciate the council giving us an opportunity to look at this, I think.
Just that you want to be sure that the voting members are the council members, so we don't get into the same issue we got with the budget committee, we had other people coming in the morning.
Thank you, and, and maybe, I think that's.
I only have the council members in the motion, and I think the handbook states that you can bring on outside advisors or citizen advisors to the committee, but they're not voting on it.
I think that's a good reminder, thank you, George.
Do we need any time, suggestion, or are we trying to get this done by a certain time, or?
Yes, ma'am. You know, I appreciate that, I think a lot of it is going to have to do with the workload of community, of community services and neighborhood, whatever that's what it could be. But I, I think it's something, this is not something I think we can look at and, and solve in six months, or, or six weeks. I think it's something that we're going to have to look at all, a lot of the corridors and the designs, and the change, the evolution of the sign industry, that I think we're going to need to look at and see where we're going with some of these things, where we would like signs, and I don't see this, I think what we did with the sign on University Avenue, we can dealt with fairly quickly. This might be a broader look and take more time. But I hope we can get it done fairly soon. We've been through this once, Kay and I, together, when we first started. And I know it will take a little time, but I think Gary McGinn and the other people that are involved are very well aware that this is the.
Now, you're going to need to be a little nervous, Gary, you and I did this before, look what happened, so we should.
And that's why I wrote, "Lessons Learned," so.
Okay.
No questions?
Any questions, and we have a motion, maybe?
If there's no other discussion, let's vote on it, all in favor? Let's see, I think I just, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, I actually have another motion I'd like to make that's closely related to this, I'm really excited about being able to work on this, but kind of relates to the lessons learned. And I'm sure you've seen some of the emails, we've all gotten them, and there's just been, I think, a loss of public confidence and trust as a result of the sign issue, and kind of the perception of the uneven playing field, where one business got a special privilege because of the lawsuit. And part of the, I think, the concern by the citizens has been due to a lack of information, or not as much information. And I think, well, as, as you know, it's, I think it's widely known now, or will be soon, that there's a group of citizens who are intending to sue the city, to enforce the ordinance, so there'll probably be depositions related to that and so forth. I just think it would be good if we, as a council, could kind of get as much helpful information out there as we could. And so, what I'd like to propose, and I have a, a motion in, in just a moment that I'd like to make, I'd like to propose that we ask our council attorney to confer with each council member, the staff, with the administration, and try to prepare a statement that we could all get behind, or at least a solid majority could get behind, that would help citizens understand kind of how this, how this happened, so.
Going to our council, the only, my only discomfort is, as, as was mentioned, you know, there's already a lawsuit, and perhaps a pending lawsuit, so I just don't know. Sometimes it's difficult to freely discuss, even discussing whether, you know, the pros and cons of what you just proposed. So, is this something that we could discuss in a closed meeting first, and, and so we could figure out what those parameters are, or is this better to?
You're talking about the discuss before, like, before attempts of drafting even took place? Is that, is that what you're asking about? I guess the answer to your question is yes. I mean, because there's reasonable litigation on this issue, pretty much any factor about this issue is something we could discuss in a closed session. I think what's being proposed so far in motion is nothing more than an attempt to be made to come up with a, with publicly releasable information. I think certainly, as I understand, I don't think there's any implication being made that would be released until it's been approved before released, so, anyway.
Okay, thank, thank you for that.
Does that make sense?
If you want to specify or clarify or whatever, and then we'll go to the other comments.
Yeah, if I can clarify, so, so the intent would be that Mr. Jones would communicate with us privately, and, and propose a, prepare a draft statement, and then in some fashion, we would need to approve that before it was released.
Are you comfortable with that? I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, I'm comfortable with the concept, I guess the.
Implementation worries me.
The implementation is the ultimate problem, right? But in any situation like this, you know, I mean, you, you look at, you know, the issue over across the, across the lake a couple of years ago with the guy with the sword, right? That, that was, that had the use of force issue with the police officer, right? I mean, there's, there's always a degree to which some information has to be made public, that, that the trick is in reaching agreement and carefully vetting that information to make sure that it's accurate, and it's what everybody feels comfortable releasing. So, I'm not, I don't have any discomfort with the idea of trying to prepare. So, I'm not, I don't have any discomfort with the idea of trying to prepare the information for release, that the trick will be in the ultimate execution of what that information is.
I agree, and I would love to do that, but one of the challenges that I faced around this is that a lot of my decisions that were made were based on conversations in the closed meetings. And so as I, yeah, and that becomes, that becomes very, hard for me to get the statement that you're wanting and still protecting the sanctity of the closed meetings.
So let, let me propose, if I might, I don't think, I'm not sure that this fits nicely in, in the item that we just discussed, it's really not on, on the agenda. What if we pull this back and just, and bring this to the next working meeting where we can discuss it and, and make a decision? Is that?
We could, I feel some urgency on this, I did discuss this with Mr. Jones, and he's approved the language of the motion, I'm not really comfortable with that it be presented now in this context, and so, but, majority, all, all I'm asking for here is that we begin the process, if he, if he can't come up with something that a majority feels comfortable with, then obviously nothing would be released, so.
So, so say it's four to three, so we're gonna, so we vote against the statement, so then we're mad guys?
I mean, that's a possibility, right? I mean, that's, that's ultimately what could happen, and it's all, again, it's all in the implementation we'll ultimately end up with, so. I don't know what, you know, I'm not sure what Mr. Sewell would do in that case, you know, he, he may choose, if it's four to three, to not, to, you know, to make a motion that it's only released if there's a supermajority behind it or if it's unanimous. I guess my only, my only concern about this question is I think it's, it's probably hard to analyze the efficacy and wisdom of it in, in theory instead of practice, I don't know, you're gonna, I'm not sure. Unless you just don't want, unless there's, unless there's just a feeling and it's not worth it.
Yeah. We're gonna go to Mr. Connect, he's inside his head for a bit.
Yeah, so I'm not, I just don't know how you could give a complete or compelling explanation of how this all transpired, how the discovery process, that might happen in a lawsuit where what a judge could listen to, the closed-door session, I mean, there are, there's information that isn't, we can't put into a public document, and then if you can't put the whole story in there, I'm not sure what we achieve.
Well, I guess I would say, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that you can't put it in a public document. There's nothing about state law that says information conveyed in a closed meeting is sacrosanct and may never be released ever by anybody. The issue is that it belongs to the public body, and so it has to be a decision of the public body to release it. But again, I, I mean, this is all a question about what it is you're, what it is you're trying to accomplish. If the goal here is to come up with a statement that nobody in the world can disagree with and that every single person who reads it will be convinced by, you're right, that's not gonna happen. On the other hand, there's been, from, at least from my perspective, from my knowledge, there have been multiple forums in which this issue has been discussed, in which different statements have been made about the same thing. And there is, I have heard at least from, that there are multiple parties who all have a different view or a different take on what happened. So if the council's interested, if the council and the administration are interested in trying to nail that down into a, an official version of facts, then I don't, I don't have a necessary problem with that, right? It's up to you to decide what you want to do.
I'd support the effort.
Okay, we, sorry, we're, we're running really long time, so if we can keep the comments real brief, but go ahead, Mr. Sewell.
One more clarification, if I might, and then if you'd like me to just move ahead to the motion, maybe you have to, but I actually got this idea in a conversation with Mr. Jones, I was really distraught over this issue, and just, like I said, the law, the loss of public trust that I felt from some really good, long-term residents who have served in a variety of positions and are very knowledgeable about city government and so forth. And he introduced the concept to me that I wasn't aware of, is that we, we can actually vote as a council to release certain facts if we want to from, from the meetings, so. I was, I was unaware of that.
Okay, Mr. Stewart? Okay, I, I will support the effort, I just want to be very careful that, and just set expectations, if, if, you know, this is a public, an exercise to, you know, restore some public trust, there may be a lot of things that we can't talk about because, for various reasons, including just, you know, in preparation for, for possible litigation, so. But, so I don't want to set really high expectations, but I would, I would support an effort to work with all parties involved and come to a consensus on what we can release to try to clarify, clarify that, so. So go ahead and read your motion.
Okay, so, here's the motion, I'll send it to you if it, if it passes. To further the goals of transparency and accountability to the citizens who elected us to serve them, I move that we ask council attorney Brian Jones to prepare a draft statement for the benefit of the public who are concerned about the Blue Rock Medical Sign. The statement would include a timeline and relevant facts pertaining to the decision to settle the lawsuit against the city by Blue Rock Medical. We ask that Mr. Jones consult with each counselor, with council staff, and with the administration to prepare a draft statement that the council could review by April 23rd, with the goal that if approved, the statement would be released to the public shortly thereafter.
I'd like to accept your motion if approved by the unanimous council.
Is there a, well, first, is there a second for Mr. Sewell's motion? It's tied against Mr. Handley's. Now we have a substitute motion to modify that so that it's only released upon unanimous vote by the council. Any seconds to that motion?
No second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Sewell, we will first vote on the substitute motion, any comments before the vote?
Help me understand the substitute, Dan, everything that he said applies unanimously.
Yeah, it will not be released unless all seven of us are in the greens, rather than just majority. Any other questions or comments on the substitute motion?
Well, I think it might be premature to, I mean, without seeing the document, there's, there's times when maybe somebody, for whatever reason, doesn't want to vote for something but doesn't really want to kill it either, I mean, someone could abstain for that matter.
Okay, any other comments, thoughts, Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, if we vote, if we vote for the motion, we have to release it. We have voted to release it. Where's the motion at standing?
I don't think that was the intent, Mr. Stewart, I think the intent was that it be reviewed by the 23rd and then, and it only be released if it's approved.
So it's not approved now, it would, it would be approved once it's drafted.
And I don't have any, I would say, I don't have any issue with the substitute motion insofar as it establishes, if its goal is to establish an intent that it'll only be released if unanimous, but even if that passes today, there's nothing to prevent the council from later changing their mind about it being unanimous.
Okay, all right, so if we want to move forward on a vote on the substitute motion? Okay, all in favor of the substitute motion? This is really unanimous? You said we can change that, right? Yes? Okay, and those both? So that was, everyone was for, again, was for, except for Mr. Harding, and that substitute motion carries. Any discussion on the now amended motion?
Yeah, just, I, I sympathize with, with purposes, and I do want, if we can bring the right information together for the color to be informed and educated and be as transparent as we can and would like to, I mean, those are all good things, and my only hesitation with the unanimous is that gives one person the ability to kill or release.
But that was the last vote.
And so, you know, as we go forward, we just need to understand what, what we're trying to achieve, and, and when we get down to the very end, it's still our final decision one way or the other.
Okay, excellent, okay, all in favor? All in favor of the original motion as amended?
The substitute motion or different?
I was interpreting George's motion to be a substitute motion, including all of the original motion. I think, I think you're done.
Yeah, I think-
Oh?
Unless there was some-
I don't, I don't think it was a motion to amend the motion, I think it was a substitute motion in its entirety.
And help me out, I probably, I won't remember the right term, but I would like to change my vote, because I thought we were voting on-
On just a change.
The change, just that, that small change, I would like to vote in favor of it.
Okay, and if you can just record that, it's, we've got provision for that in the council, we're still on the same subject.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Mr. Jones, appreciate your assistance with this. All right. We're gonna take a break now, five minutes break the schedule, we are way behind schedule, but at least I need five minutes to try to gather myself, so, please gather back here by three o'clock. All in favor? All in favor of the original motion as amended?
The substitute motion for a different.
I apologize.
I was interpreting George's motion to be a substitute motion that included all of the original motion. I think you're done.
Yeah, I think. Unless there was some.
I don't think it was a motion to amend the motion. I think it was a substitute motion in its entirety.
And help me out, I probably won't remember the right term, but I would like to change my vote because I thought we were voting on.
On just a change.
To change, just that, that small change. I would like to vote in favor of it.
And if you can just record that. We've got provision for that in the council room as well. We're still on the same subject.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate your assistance with this. We're going to take a break now. If I didn't break the schedule, we are way behind schedule, but at least I need five minutes to try to gather myself. So please gather back here by three o'clock. All in favor? All in favor of the original motion as amended?
The substitute motion for a different.
I was interpreting George's motion to be a substitute motion that included all of the original motion. I think you're done.
Yeah, I think.
Oh.
Unless there was some.
I don't think it was a motion to amend the motion. I think it was a substitute motion in its entirety.
And help me out, I probably won't remember the right term, but I would like to change my vote because I thought we were voting on.
On just a change.
To change, just that, that small change. I would like to vote in favor of it.
And if you can just record that. We've got provision for that in the council room as well. We're still on the same subject.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate your assistance with this. We're going to take a break now. If I didn't break the schedule, we are way behind schedule, but at least I need five minutes to try to gather myself. So please gather back here by three o'clock. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not even like ready to go on to the next item. Almost back to where we need to be.
Dustin single-handedly brought us back.
Number seven, a presentation on the Energy Department and potential budget requests by our Energy Director Travis Ball and his budget of 30 minutes.
Thank you, Chair and Council and Administration. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about our budget. We have some exciting, exciting things to present here, so we're excited about doing this. First off, I want to thank the staff that has really put this budget together. I have Pat and Scott and Kat here that will help me. And especially Charlie, who's done a lot of work. She keeps us in line on the budget. And if you know our Peggy and our staff, she literally watches every dollar of our budget. And if we don't have it in the right budget category, she lets us know. Is that right? Peggy is a bulldog when it comes to our budget. As we've talked before, the main goal in the Power Department is to be the most reliable power system in the United States and while providing a safe environment for our employees. And that's what we work towards and that's what we set our budgets towards. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about reliability in our department, value-added services that we have for the city, and then finally, we'll end with the actual budget. First off, every month, we meet with our Energy Board and we go over our key performance indicators and some of the goals that we've set in the department. Obviously, some of the most important ones are safety, so we keep track of our accidents or our lost time accidents, and we've been very good this past year. We're always looking at our budget, making sure that we are keeping our budget and well within the parameters, as you can see. The one thing that we've added here is in sufficient capacity, looking at other resources. As we move away from some of our coal resources, we need to go out and replace those resources. And what we are looking at is more renewable resources. And so, this last year, we picked up some resources. The Olmsted Power Plant, which is a hydro plant at the mouth of the canyon. And then also BYU, we picked up a cogem from BYU that actually is recognized as a renewable in the fact that they're using the heat for air conditioning and ED. And so, we count that. So our renewable resources have gone from about 25% to about 31%. Next year, we think we're going to pick up an 80-megawatt solar plant, which will actually bring it up to almost 35% to 40%. Yes, Gary?
It's interesting to me that BYU is considered renewable as a gas generator and ours here are not, ours at Provo City are not considered, or in Salt Lake are not considered renewable, are they?
They're not for the fact that they're simple cycle and they just, we just use that for power. BYU uses the heat from the engines to actually cool and to heat their campus. So it's used for two purposes.
So that makes it renewable?
That's right.
Like a hybrid?
Exactly. One of the most important aspects of a utility in reliability is keeping our trees trimmed. And we have a very aggressive tree trimming department in our city, a forestry department that do a great job. They trim 9,000 trees a year. And if you think about where our reliability was about 20 years ago, it wasn't nearly as good as it is today, and mostly because of our tree trimming activities that we do. We're proud of the tree trimmers in our department. As far as the CIP, you saw a little bit when Dustin put that up. We have two new substations we're planning on building, starting next year and the year after. The Mountain Vista Substation down in the Mountain Vista Park. And then the Gillespie Substation, which is the mouth of the canyon, which is a very old substation that we're planning on redoing. Dustin hit on the SCADA system. One of my first projects was putting that SCADA system in in 1996. It was a Unix system and it's just run like a, if you think about computer systems, it just goes 24 hours a day, seven days a week and has been very reliable, never down. Well, it's getting to the point where we need to patch it and upgrade that. So we patched it from Unix to Linux in 2006, and now we're going to patch it again this next year, and that's kind of what Dustin's talking about. And lastly, we have miscellaneous projects, city projects that we put in our CIP budget. If there's roads that need to be widened from Public Works, or if there's the west side, the airport, we need to get power out to the airport, that's kind of where we take money out for that activity. In addition to our CIP projects, we have value-added services in the city. Conservation is very important. Rebates, streetlights, city trees, and our transfer that we feel is very important to the city. Obviously, in our building, you've all been over there, Lead Gold, we actually take groups through that building probably, yeah, probably about two or three times a month. BYU groups, EDU groups, scout groups, and we always talk about the Lead Gold aspect and the sustainability portion of that building and what we did to make sure that we're very energy efficient there. We have rooftop solar on our canopies. Through you, we've allowed rooftop solar throughout the community, which helps with our renewable portfolio. We have a hybrid in our department and looking at other options for our trucks, a hybrid option there. We provide free public charging. I have a hybrid, a plug-in hybrid that I used to, I could plug in outside the building here, but it's always full now. I can never park there anymore. So it is interesting that people are using those more often. Yes, Gary?
So are we completely going away from natural gas as a fuel for cars and fleets?
I don't know if we're completely going away. I think that's an option. I think they're looking more towards battery and hybrid options. We haven't got anything with natural gas on our vehicles.
No. And on our large trucks, we can't. There's about to be out there right now that allows for it. But what we are looking at is with their hydraulic systems for their lifts, is going to a system where they have dual hydraulics and electric, so they can pull the truck up on site. If they're using the hydraulics, even the truck has to idle, so they can operate it. Now, with these upgrades, what we'll be able to do is they can pull up on site, turn their truck off, and then use the battery on it to operate their lifts. And if there is an issue with the battery, they can always fire out the truck and get hydraulics going. And then we also have with some of our pickups, you know, the Ford is coming out this fall with the F-150 Hybrid. And so, we're actually looking with some of our trucks that our engineers use, and we have in front of every one of their parking stalls, we've got outlets, and so we easily have them charging those throughout the day when they're not using them in the circuit overnight. So we're going to be upgrading those.
Looks like it with our solar canopies charging our trucks during, yes, Gary?
With the pre-public charging stations, we're getting 33 more through the Volkswagen settlement. And are those going to be free also? And if so, will they also have the capability at some point to potentially recover some of the cost for charging vehicles?
Absolutely. We make sure of that. We are planning on doing it for a year, so free, but then there will be a, just like if you've been up to Salt Lake, they have a, you can go in and you can charge, but then in the future, I believe, they'll make you pay for it. You have to register to charge, and then in the future, they'll pay for the energy that you use. So we made sure of that when we were talking about the Volkswagen brand. Lastly, UMPA Solar, we talked about the 80-megawatts of solar coming on. We encourage conservation through rebates and through items we give for weatherization, appliances, home energy audits. Kat does a great job with this. We've given over $1 million away for this project. What's interesting, we've got growth in the city with population growth, but our energies stayed about the same. And so, we believe that through energy efficiency, our energies, it's getting pretty flat. In fact, our capacity, our load factors stay pretty, has actually gotten better. And so, our cost has gone down. And we believe part of that is from our energy efficiency and from people being more energy conscious. Our streetlights, if you've seen on Center Street, we've replaced our streetlights there, and right now, we're working on University. Whenever we do so, we change to an LED light, which saves on energy and also gives a better light. You should see on University in the next month or two, a lot better lighting along that corridor.
Question?
Yes.
So that's a benefit to Provo citizens because of our power company?
Yes.
But I think in Orem, they have a separate fee for streetlights that ends up on the utility bill or somewhere?
Every month, they pay $3 on their electric bill for streetlighting, and that's something that we take care of without. It's part of our budget, obviously, but it is a benefit to the citizens of Provo. And finally, we get to the tree program. Like we said, we love our trees. In addition to the trimming the trees around the power lines, we have a street tree program where we have over 15,000 trees that we take care of. Interestingly enough here, we're doing an audit with all our trees. We're trying to determine what they are, how big they are, for the pure fact that we can say how much carbon sequestration those trees are taking care of, which in addition to making the city beautiful in Provo, I think there's a benefit to the air quality. And not only carbon, but FPM 2.5 trees take care of a lot of the air issues, and we believe that's a great thing for the city of Provo.
Another question about trees. You say "our" trees. Are they only on our property that you deal with, or is it in the right-of-way, could be a private tree under the right-of-way that you take care of? Is that included in the 9,000?
The 9,000 is in property where they're under the power lines, where they're near power lines. The 15,000 are in the city right-of-way that we maintain, plan, and maintain. And Scott Spinner Forster for 20 years. Anything you want to add to that?
The inventory is just, it's going to be a great thing. I think we'll coordinate it, Doug and the Parks Department, because they've also put an inventory on their trees. There's a program called iTree that will take all of that data that we collect from this inventory and simplify it slightly, tell us exactly how much all these trees on city property, how much carbon they sequester, like Travis said, how much FPM 2.5s they also sequester as well. A lot of different benefits of 25 key indicators that will actually tell us about the benefits of those trees.
We encourage conservation through rebates and through items we give for weatherization, appliances, home energy audits. Cat does a great job with this. We've given over $1 million away for this project. What's interesting, we've got growth in the city with population growth, but our energy stayed about the same. And so, we believe that through energy efficiency, our energies, it's not, it's getting pretty flat. In fact, our capacity, our load factors stay pretty, has actually gotten better. And so, our cost has gone down. And we believe part of that is from our energy efficiency and from people being more energy Our streetlights, if you've seen on Center Street, we've replaced our streetlights there, and right now, we're working on University. Whenever we do so, we change to an LED light, which saves on energy and also gives a better light. You should see on University in the next month or two, a lot better lighting along that corridor.
Question?
Yes.
So, that's a benefit to Provo citizens because of our power company?
Yes.
But I think in Orem, they have a separate fee for streetlights that ends up on the utility bill or somewhere?
Every month, they pay $3 on their electric bill for streetlighting, and that's something that we take care of without. It's part of our budget, obviously, but it is a benefit to the citizens of Provo. And finally, we get to the tree program. Like we said, we love our trees. In addition to the trimming the trees around the power lines, we have a street tree program where we have over 15,000 trees that we take care of. Interestingly enough here, we're doing an audit with all our trees. We're trying to determine what they are, how big they are, for the pure fact that we can say how much carbon sequestration those trees are taking care of, which in addition to making the city beautiful in Provo, I think there's a benefit to the air quality. And not only carbon, but FPM 2.5 trees take care of a lot of the air issues. And we believe that's a great thing for the city of Provo.
Another question about trees. You say our trees. Are they only on our property that you deal with, or is it under, in the right-of-way, could be a private tree under the right-of-way that you take care of? Is that included in the 9,000?
The 9,000 is in property where they're under the power lines, where they're near power lines. The 15,000 are in the city right-ofways that we maintain, plan, and maintain. And Scott's been at Forster for 20 years. Anything you want to add to that?
The inventory is, it's going to be a great thing. I think we're coordinating Doug and the Parks Department, because they've also put an inventory on their trees. And there's a program called iTree that will take all of that data that we collect from this inventory and simplify it slightly, tell us exactly how much all these trees on city property, how much carbon they sequester. Like Travis said, how much FPM 2.5s they also sequester as well. A lot of different benefits of 25 key indicators that will actually tell us about the benefits of those trees.
I just have maybe a resident that's going to call me up and say, why is Provo City Power chopping down my tree or cutting my tree? It's on my property, but it's in the right-of-way, is what you're telling me.
And generally, in most situations, we provide at least one, if not several, voucher to replace that tree somewhere else in the property, if they will.
Yeah. Most of the trees that we are cutting are basically under power lines, right? If they cause it, if they look like they're getting dangerous for the public, then we'll take them out of the public right-of-way and replace them.
We started this program back in 1994. We removed a lot of trees under the power lines. We don't remove layers anymore, just because we've taken care of all the larger cost problems, and we've replaced a lot of them as well.
As you know, we have transfers to the general fund. We've transferred almost $8 million. Part of our transfer, also another $3.5 million, which for our budget is about 19%. The $3.5 million is our charge backs, which pays for 311 and some of the other city services that we use. Now, with all that said, with the amount of money we transferred, we still want to make sure that we're competitive with other utilities. And so, we want to look at how our rates compare. We showed this before to you guys, but the revenues and what our expenses are, we believe, this next year. So, as we look at the comparisons, we're right about in the middle of where we are, both residential, commercial, and industrial, which is pretty amazing in the fact that we do have significantly more transfer than anybody that we compare against. Which brings us to this slide, revenues. And I'll have Cat and Scott help me with this here in a second. The revenues, we are budgeting a $1.4 million revenue increase in our ONM, and our CIP revenue is going up $1.4 million for a total increase of $2.7 million. So, you might wonder, where does all that money go? So, I'm going to have Cat and Scott do something with some candy here, because I know you guys need some sugar to keep yourselves going. So, we are going to put this in to show you where our money goes. First off, 56...
Not really big enough.
56% of our revenue. So, we have a revenue of $85 million, $85 million budget. Where does that money go? 56% of it goes to our power rates. So, this is what we keep paying here for our power. We can't just get it once. I mean, it's so big. It's the big portion of our budget, right? It's the major portion of our budget. Second portion of our budget is the personnel cost. The personnel cost is 9% of our budget.
Just so you know, personnel is my favorite.
Operation, operation, this is our 4%. This is what the manager's put together. So, 4% of our total budget is operations. And so, when, if, I'm showing you this because there's a question that each director is supposed to show you. If there was a 5%, we were asked to cut 5% because the economy went down, what would we do in our budget? Most people would look at the operation portion of that and see if they could cut 5%. I don't think I can get 5% on my budget by cutting the whole operation. I can't, I can't get that. So, how do we deal with that? Obviously, the good thing about power department, I will say, is that even if the economy dropped and everybody's asked 5%, what happens in electricity? People don't stop using electricity. They still use electricity, right? It's an inelastic commodity that people are going to use. So, in 2008, when the economy taint, people still use electricity, which is good for the city of Provo.
Oh, he just reduced the budget.
That's how we do our 5%. We're pretty impressive. That's kind of how I did it at home.
So, if we were asked to do 5%, we would do CIP. CIP is 13%. And we're not going to get all this in.
You say CIP is 13%? Is that what you said?
It is of our total budget.
13%, so that's, meaning those are just projects that you put in, physical infrastructure that costs money now, but you use over the next 30 years.
30, 40 years, right. So, could we delay a substation a year? And that's what we normally do. Whenever we go put a budget together, we say, do we have to do that CIP project this year, or can we delay it a year? If we were asked to cut that 5%, that's where we look. That's really the only place we can look. If power, if people, commercial customers start leaving, what happens is, this portion of the budget goes down, and so, we don't pay as much, really, we get a cut in there. So, that's kind of where the power department will get it. Now, this is going to be interesting, see if you can get all that in. This is the transfer to general fund. There we go.
You can give me some of that job that you can keep all the transfers.
So, 13% of the transfer, and then the last 4%, so the same amount is in the operation, the last 4% is the charge backs.
We are over budget.
Yep. Well, it just goes over the charge backs. That's the gold fever, if you see. So, that's kind of where our $85 million goes.
There's two sides to the table.
Spring, George, some root beer. All right. That's kind of where our budget is expended. So, what does that mean this year? What is interesting is you can look, you can see what we talked about, power cost, personnel. Our total budget next year is $85 million on expenditures. So, on our ONM, our ONM decrease, we predict by 1.7, almost $2 million. Our CIP expenditures next year, decrease from last year, 7.9 million, for a total decrease of 9.7. So, the great thing here, right, we have revenues and expenditures. How do they match?
Questions?
Yes.
When do we see the, oops, on the previous slide, I guess, the telecom deal, when does that expire?
That is a good point. I think we looked at that 2004, or 2024.
24, that's right.
Isn't that right?
I think it might actually mean 25, but we might have some time to retire and charge early.
Because we've had growth, we've brought more money in than what was originally thought, right? And so, we might be able to do it a year early, is what I... So, what we're saying is with our budget this year, we are budgeting a flat budget, no rate increases. Our revenues will meet our expenditures, and so, we're excited about that. Last year, we actually budgeted a deficit, but this year, I think we're in good shape. So, any questions? Yes, Dave?
So, maybe I misread those numbers, but it sounded like our revenues were going up almost $3 million, $2.5?
1.7 million. Oh, this is expenditures. Revenue's 1.4 million.
And then, CIP revenue, what's the difference? I guess, what's CIP revenue?
CIP revenue are projects that have impact fees, aid to construction on capital improvement project funds. So, like a new development that would require a CIP, that's where we get this from.
So, the total increase of 2.7 million, and then the revenue, or sorry, not the revenue, expenditures are going down almost $10 million. So, it seems like we should have $12.5 million more than last year.
That's, we had a very heavy CIP budget, so that doesn't mean that we can actually replace dollar for dollar on our CIP. That's just the comparison from last year to this year, is how much it went down. And most of that was because of the carry forward that we brought for projects into this year's budget. And so, I have that, and I knew that would be a question. If you want to see what the actual budget is, you can look, and we can send it to each of you. We have every line item on our budget, the $85 million, we had it line itemmed out. So, you can see where every one of those funds are coming from.
Okay. I was just going to say, it seems to me like we should have, you know, a big cushion, whatever the opposite of a deficit is, you know, there should be, but then you'd show that it's, the next slide in is, if you go one more slide, saying, you know, we've got a surplus of $16,000. So, I mean, just doing it in my head, I was thinking, was our deficit $12.5 million last year?
It wasn't $12.5 million, but it was significant, that we budgeted. And a lot of it has to do with our CIP, which projects we are working on, and which ones we're carrying forward. So, if you look at the CIP budget, there's some line items on what are you saving up to do your projects? And we save up for five, six years on some of these bigger projects, and then we'll expend them in one year. So, we carry forward those items, and that's where that money comes from. So, it's not in one-year budget. You have to look at it on CIP on a multi-year timeframe. The good thing is, is we've saved up for some of the projects, and this year, we're only asking for about $4.5 million of new funds. And so, that's where we balance with the carry forward, because our CIP is still up in the 11, 12 million, but we've saved up for those projects over the years, and that's where that difference is.
Is our fund balance in operations, are we still contributing to a fund balance for the energy department, or is that $16,000? What do you think is that?
We have a two, about $2.5 million in ONM fund balance, but that will be dropped to the bottom line and could be given to the CIP. So, when you look at both the CIP and the ONM, they balance out. So, we're not budgeting for a surplus in our ONM. We're budgeting for a flat.
And I'm looking at the specific fund balance for, I guess, what do we call it? Rate stabilization? That's what I'm looking at. Are we satisfied? Are you satisfied at this point with our rate stabilization fund?
We are. We've met our goal. If you look at our goals, we are where we need to be on our rate stabilization fund. Obviously, I'm mostly concerned about that, that power cost, because that's a market-driven item. If gas prices change at all, our power costs go up. And for us, that's the biggest risk, is what happens to our power price. And so, a very good rate stabilization fund helps out in our department.
I'm glad you look at that as the biggest risk, rather than the council as the biggest risk.
So, I'm just wondering, for emergency backup, if the upper grid goes down, we have these four generators on block five?
Five, two and a half megawatt generators, yeah.
Okay. And those are for the hospital or whatever? I mean, you've already got a plan where it goes?
Yep. City center, the rec center, some areas where we keep people, and the hospitals.
Correct. Right. And then, does the Olmsted Power Plant keep running and contribute?
It would depend. That would be a little bit harder to plan. They would probably be tripped offline. It would be determined on the transmission system, what's going on in the transmission system.
Right. So, right now, it's not necessarily...
It's not included in a black start. You have to have a black start capability, so the power is synchronized with a engine. And I don't know if we have, I don't think we have any black start on that, on that power plant. I don't know if we can push the generators at the city center up to the interconnection point, so let them be in the system. That's what it would be up to, if we could synchronize our system with Olmsted.
So, what you have in your block is the only backup?
Yes. Other than most, you know, the hospital has backup generators, the city center has backup generators, just backup generators. And BYU has a generator now that they've put in for a black start, and that's a 15-megawatt. That's not one unit's worth more than the five units that we have at the city.
So, they are able to operate independently?
Yes. And in the interconnection agreements, there's some items we have to do. It's a, you know, it might be a full day, but if there's an emergency, if we needed to put people in emergency, BYU could generate for power.
Travis?
Yes.
$11 million in transfers is certainly more than 1%.
$11 million includes the transfer for the telecom, telecom debt service. So, it's just a balancing, because we get revenue. In order to make this work, showing expenditures and revenues, we had to put that somewhere. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Karen wants to add, we have power costs.
Yes. All right.
Oh, by the way, this is yours, so you guys have some sugar tonight. Do you want to present this to the council?
All right. We will move to item number eight, the presentation on the library department and potential budget request. This will be presented to us by our library director, Sergeant Nelson.
Ryan says we have to pull this out, so when he gets to the... We're going to move this one. George wants it?
So, on behalf of the council, I say how wonderful it is to see you here with us today.
Thank you. And let me tell you how wonderful it is to see you. It's been a very interesting four or five months, I'll tell you.
I bet.
And I want, matter of fact, just wonderful segue, I want to thank everybody for your well wishes, your thoughts, your prayers. One day over lunch, I'll regale you with stories. It's more miracles than a guy should be lucky enough to have in his life. And I'm so grateful and fortunate, and this is my seventh week back full-time. I'm not at full speed yet. That will take another number of months, but I'm feeling pretty decent. For a guy that was dead three times, I'm feeling pretty good. And so, it's an amazing story. It's one of those Reader's Digest things that you would think, oh, boy, somebody's really kind of stretching the truth just a bit. If I hadn't been through it, mayor saw it. So, thank you very much. I'm very, very grateful. I believe truly, my wife and I, that, oh, there's obviously something else I'm supposed to be doing here, or some other things. I'm not sure what those are yet, but I'm starting to figure some things out. But we really believe that the many, many prayers and people worried about me made a huge difference. So, thank you very much. As I get started, if I had, I just ran the numbers. If I had Travis's budget, we could have a neighborhood library in every neighborhood in this city. We really could. No. It's great to be here, and I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thanks for asking to be here. And we're just going to cover a little bit of budget, but I really want to address how the library is addressing some of the general plan goals and needs, and what we're doing with what we've got going on. To let you know, maybe a lot of you don't know, but every, about every four years, we have, we're required by the state library, the Uton State Library, to prepare a strategic plan, which is a great thing to do, because it keeps us on our toes and keeps us planning ahead. And with our general plan with the city, we're just mentioned a couple of times. I suspect a lot of that is because we have our own internal strategic plan, yet a lot of the strategic plan addresses about a half a dozen of those general plan items that I'd like to talk briefly about. This is our revenue. It just covered just very briefly. I only have 15 minutes, so I think I gave Brian a heart failure just a while ago, and I told him I've got an hour and a half worth of stuff here. And our budget this year is going to be pretty much the same as last year. Our expenditures will be pretty much the same. Things don't change a great deal out there. We may have some internal changes. Most of our revenue comes from 80%, but almost 80% comes from a dedicated library tax that is ours to deal, do what we need to. Frankly, folks, over the years, that dedicated fund has saved your library. It has allowed us to do the things that we need to do to keep it running properly. And I am very thankful for the city council, the board, and the mayors many years ago that made sure that we have some dedicated funds to us. And you can see, we also pick up a few dollars from vehicle taxes, a few other things that we have interest income as a whole whopping 1% or so. So, it's about the same. I think we'll be looking at about $4.4, $4.5 million this year. Our expenditures are even simpler. Personnel is about 60 to 62%. And just for the record, I think there's some folks that think that we're independently wealthy, because we have our own money. And, well, we have 93 employees, 22 are full-time. We rely heavily on our part-time staff to give that service that we want to give. So, it's still 61%. Our operating expenses, they're almost 30. And then, our book budget and our digital budget. Things have changed over the years. We first, back when I started 40 years ago in this business, it was just books. It really was. I think we had a couple of... I think we had a couple of records. And some of you may remember, Carla has no clue what I'm talking about. But we had records. And then these bikes came along. And so we then had to take all of our money in our budget and then also be purchasing a lot of new computer things that they had that were coming out. And so now we have computers everywhere in the library, of course. And so I've always thought about the books, bikes, and building. I love the academy. It's been an absolute dream to work in. And we have our challenges, but it's a wonderful place. And our community loves that building. It's an expensive building. I just dropped about $150,000 on a variety of things that needed to be replaced. And so we have to save that money and make sure we have that money set aside for that. And I think we've done a pretty good job. But recently, particularly with the general plan, as libraries have gone beyond, particularly a public library, programming has become huge. It's a lifeblood. It's really important to libraries today. People turn to us for the programs that we do. And so then I'd like to just briefly address how we're meeting some of those general plan items. And I'll pick those out right here. 1.4.2.1, consider gathering in social places. We are really the living room for the city. We put on about 120 wedding receptions a year up in our ballroom. And altogether, about, what are we looking at? Probably about 3,000 meetings a year that we facilitate in these spaces. They come from all over for it. This is a yoga class out in the front lawn that we held last summer. We have small group study rooms. We're finding, matter of fact, we're working on a project right now to expand the number of small group study rooms, because people want to collaborate more than they did 18 years ago when they built the building. So we're looking at finding some more spaces to do that. We recently, what was it, Carla, four years ago? Built our smart room. And we have this monitor and all the plugs and everything that we need for a variety of people to come in and have everything match up, so they can work together. And of course, our ballroom here is one of our favorite things, is bringing authors in. We're known, not only locally, statewide, but nationally for bringing in authors. I've been able to develop a lot of friendships over the years with publishing houses. And this is a local guy. Some of you, if you have grandchildren or younger children, Brandon Mull, who is just a local guy, and he's made it big. And then next to him is Shannon Hale, a Newberry Honor Award winner, who also has made it big, another local author. And we had about 400 people in the ballroom. Everything that we do as far as our spaces and our meetings, for the most part, with rare exception, are free. We don't charge a penny. And we have meetings of our local Boy Scouts, along with all kinds of nonprofit type of groups. So we think that we're really helping the city meet those goals of providing some of those spaces. We also have, in 5.4.2, 5.4.10, this is really the only one I could find that actually has library listed in the general plan. I think that's the only one. But we had discussed some time ago that we need to really be more inclusive and make sure that we have all of our folks represented in programs. And so you can see, here's a fiesta type of program. And recently, we've had Polynesian dancers. We have these big horns that they use in Switzerland, those long things about 12-foot long. We had those in the ballroom. Wow. We had a Native American group. Recently, we had an African-American dance group, and then we had Christmas around the world. These programs are all helping us meet those desires of making sure every Provo citizen feels like they're important, that they see themselves in some of these programs. In 5.4.1.1, it talks about calendars. And we have a very aggressive calendar. I've been in public libraries now for almost 30 years. I've never seen a public library with as many programs, children, teens, adults, that we do. And you can go online and see our events calendar, and there's things going constantly. And then 6.4.1, raise awareness of local history, culture, and historic sites. This is in our fairly recently renovated attic, which is now our exhibition space. We've had a great World War II exhibit. Was this last year, a year before? I think it was last year. And so we brought in a local expert to talk about it. We also have a number of exhibits and themes. This is out of our special collections room. Matter of fact, I believe, Mr. Paxman, this is part of your family line, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah. And we have lecture series, and we have all kinds of programs about history, local and statewide type of things here. We've had our author of our Provo history things, books come out and speak. And you know, I think just about before, right after those first paintings started being painted on walls and caves, people started wanting to then write down, figure out some way to transfer what they're thinking beyond the art. We see arts and letters being a natural combination. It has been for years and years and years, and libraries have been doing that. This was, the academy happened to be my third library building that I've built, and every one of them I've had at least one art gallery. I think it's a terrific connection. So 8.4.2, protect, provide enhanced opportunities and facilities for the arts entertainment. We really think that we're really helping the city meet those needs there. This was a woodwind group we had up in our ballroom, I think it was a Monday night program. This is our attic space, where we bring in about a half a dozen different exhibits every year, artistic, historical, scientific. This is our fairy tea, and this is one of our ballerinas. If you don't know about our fairy tea, we do five sessions of our fairy tea, and that's 1,000 people that come and watch, dress up in their fairy finery, watch ballerina dancers, and watch your trulies in green tights, or blue tights, depending on the year. This is our Harry Potter thing that we had, that we held, an activity with our tweens. We try desperately to hit all of the age groups. So, you know, a typical 11, 12, 13-year-old, they don't want anything to do with children's anymore. They're not quite ready for the teen world yet. So we have tween activities as well. And this is one of our musical events that we had, the little ones obviously get pretty interested in that clarinet. Or no, it looks like a flute. And here's our gallery downstairs, the Anderson Gallery, that we have local artists, about a half a dozen a year, local artists that come and show their work. So providing, protecting, providing enhanced opportunities, we think we're doing it. More authors, if you've been involved with kids, books, and all, How to Train Your Dragon, or if you've seen the movies. Okay. Some of you, thank you, Clive, appreciate that. This is Chris Akow, she was the author of those books. And to my right here is Ali Conde, another local author, who's made the bestsellers list. And so we bring in about 45 to 50 of these authors and illustrators every year. So I just wanted to kind of show you how we're kind of addressing the arts and what we think is important. We're proud of what we do. I think I've got two minutes. And let me just touch very briefly on some of the questions that you had. What would I do if I had more money? Gosh, thanks, guys. Just a little bit of Travis, this would be terrific. But I do need to say, we have a healthy savings account. We've worked really hard over the years, frankly, since George was mayor. We've worked hard to set aside for that time of real need. And so our budget is about 4.5 million, thereabouts, this next year, and we have a little over $5 million in two different savings accounts. We're.
Isn't that, Gene, isn't that budget going down and down every year?
Our operational budget is, and so is some of that money. But it's interesting, Gary, how at the end of the year, monies that we haven't used or slight increases in some things seem to pick it back up. And so, as I've said before to this group, we have raised taxes in 21 years for the library. And of course, our expenses are like this, and so the revenue's kind of going a little bit down. But when we use about, I think we usually use about $200,000 to $250,000 from our ending fund balance to meet our budget and balance it before the year. We still have about 5.3, I think 5.3, 5.4 million dollars. And so we don't anticipate coming to you at any point in the next year, or two, or three, or four years and saying, gosh, we need to raise our budget. If we wanted to build five more libraries, but I think in this day and age, our library's going to take really good care of us for the future. And so as far as what would I do if we had more money? I won't be able to get back to Paxman. Yeah, books, bikes, and buildings, that's always our balancing act. I should have had one at the end. Bad planning. Here it goes. This is our balancing. And so also being asked, gee, if we had to cut 5 percent, how would we handle that? We would do a balancing act and figure out for each one of these how we take 5 percent out of that to make all this work. We're very, very optimistic and positive for the future. We're doing what we need to be doing. We're always excited about doing new things, particularly with arts, our collection. We want more and more books and materials. We're doing more and more eBooks and downloadables for a newer generation. And yet, there's still a lot of old parts like me and some of you that love just to hold those books and read those, too. So we want to keep that balancing act. Our computers, we just did a massive upgrade on servers and things. We're pretty much responsible for our computers. And we have our own IS department, everything else that takes care of that. Obviously, the building, we have work to do, and then we'd add some more additional programs. So I want to just quickly touch on those things that were general plan related. I think, Bryce, I think that's what we talked about. Any questions quickly? I don't want to plow into the mayors. Gary, please.
And just a question about, I see a lot of things that you're doing, are you interfacing with the Arts Council and with the Parks and Rec? I see the yoga on the front lawn. Are they able, are you able to interface with them to get the words out and the?
We have done that, yeah. Matter of fact, both of us have been talking about needing to take advantage of the others' population to do some more advertising. For example, the Covey Center does some advertising in the library in our main hallways they come through. So I would love to do some more things like what Parks and Rec is up to.
And I think the Arts Council.
Yeah.
At times, we let the Arts Council go, I think, for a while, because we didn't know what exactly what to do with them. But if this is something that can incorporate.
Be that the other. Any questions? Thank you so much for your attention, and anytime you have a question about the library, just don't hesitate to give us some questions. Thank you much.
Thank you so much. And we'll be happy to give you Travis's budget as soon as you bring in Travis's revenue.
Oh, there's always.
There's this budget.
There's definitely problems, David. I love Butterfinger though.
If you wanted to leave.
But I do want, are these the throwing ones, or these ones you're going to give me?
Well, you can take some of these.
Okay.
They're being appropriated down here.
Now, if you raise the library taxes, then maybe we could be a little bit closer to what Travis. No, I think we're in great shape.
Absolutely. And we appreciate what you contribute to the community.
Thank you.
I mean, if you're not asked to be a power company, you're asked to provide the library, and you're doing a wonderful job. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Last item on the agenda. We have a presentation on the mayor's office and potential budget requests, and this will be presented, oh, by our chief executive officer, Mr. Wayne Parker.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We'll be appropriately briefed. You gave Gene 15 minutes for $5 million. I'm not sure what 1.5 buys me, but that's about our budget level for this year. I'm circulating a memo to highlight some of the response to some of the questions about the general plan. I'm not going to go through those specifically. I'm going to probably talk a little more about kind of unfunded needs and supplementals, and then I want to talk for just a minute about the innovation program, which, as you know, was pared back substantially, back to zero this year. And we've actually come up with a strategy, we think, to work for getting that back in without having to have a significant general fund impact. First of all, just, our staff is relatively small. We have six full-time employees in the mayor's office, mayor and deputy mayor, Isaac Paxman and me, along with our communications outreach person and two clerical staff. We also have a part-time intern, actually seasonal is probably a better term, workforce, primarily during the summer and then part-time during the regular school year. Interestingly enough, we've had some real struggles filling that internship position. The BYU NPA program has long had a concentration in local government. The numbers have fallen off substantially in that group now, with a lot more focus on the nonprofit world. And so the last two years, we've really struggled to try to find a person to fill graduate-level intern.
They have to be graduate-level.
They do have to be graduate-level, yeah. So a couple of years ago, we actually brought a graduate student from Arizona State, simply because we couldn't find one in Utah that kind of met our qualifications. A lot of them have an interest in going to other forms of local government, because they kind of intend their career path to be kind of a council manager form. And so we've struggled a little bit trying to find really good folks. We had an amazing internship program for many years, and I think, again, the interest in public sector employment kind of generalists is, I think, tailing off just a little bit. And as the economy heats up, that frequently happens. And so we'll continue to recruit and look for a person to fill that slot for us. We've not been successful thus far in filling our summer spot, and so we'll continue to work on that. As we've talked earlier in this meeting, we have proposed a reorganization. So about the only unfunded need we really perceive right now is not so much in the mayor's office, but as it would relate to the creation of the new Development Services Department. So we'll be going through that process as well, through the supplemental process. We were asked about what to do in the case of a sudden economic downturn, and the good news and the bad news is, we've done that before. We know just how to address that question. And that's largely to bring a lot of stakeholders together and figure out what to do across the city organization. In our case, just specifically to the mayor's office, we eliminated a full-time position during the downturn in 2007, 2008. We consolidated positions, so we took the former ombudsman and the former property manager position and merged those together, and then put it in the Community Development Department. And so we've tried to identify through that process ways we can economize with our department budget, and we look for opportunities to do, to bring stakeholders into the process to help us identify ways to get, to manage a 5 percent operating budget reduction if we needed to do that. Finally, let me just talk briefly about the innovation program. So we allocated, a couple of years ago, we allocated $200,000 to the innovation program. We provided kind of a grant program internally to the city organization, where people could come and say, I've got a great idea, I just need some seed money, or I need to buy software, or I need to do something in that regard. That was a good program, lasted us for a year. Most of the plans, the grants we allocated have been implemented. We do have a small remaining fund balance, about $30,000, that hasn't been allocated. We've kind of carried that over, but really didn't feel like that was enough to do a robust program, and so we were kind of waiting to see what would happen in the coming fiscal year. And as we began recognizing, and we'll talk more in two weeks about the status of the Provo 360 project, we've been using that resource of the, not the innovation fund, but the Employee Recognition Fund. And again, you'll recall, a number of years ago, during Mayor Curtis's time, anything we spend less than the budget in the general fund, at the end of the fiscal year, we take half of that and put it back in general fund balance. We take the other half and have put it in Employee Recognition Fund. And we use that to bonus a variety of achievements on the part of our employees. The last couple of years, we've used that to bonus folks who've really gone way above and beyond in the Provo 360 project. We have about a year left of that project, and we've determined now we have sufficient in that fund balance to cover next year's allocation for Provo 360. And so the question? And so the question came up, do we want to continue that program going into next fiscal year? Do we want to do something else with that? Generally, it's been one-time money because it's a budget, you know, savings in the budget, which isn't usually replicated in an ongoing basis. And so as we began having conversations about what do we do to reform, reformulate that program, or abandon it or do something else, the mayor had the really brainstorm idea that occasionally comes to a few of us, comes to her a lot more often than this comes to me, but to say, why don't we figure out how to marry the employee recognition fund with the innovation program? And so what we're proposing to do here is to use that resource to fund the innovation program, but we'll also marry the employee recognition plan by allowing those who actually come in and make a proposal, if they successfully implement it at the end of the year, not only have they had their seed money to do it, but now we're proposing to give them a small bonus, and it would be probably allocated based on either an individual or a team. We put a cap on it and probably cap a team proposal and so forth. Successful in getting, awarding the grant program through our grant review process, we bring in outsiders. We typically brought in the entrepreneurial community to help us judge those grants. Then we'll give the seed money, and then upon successful completion and achievement of the metrics that were proposed in the grant program, we then bonus the employees who were participating in that. So that's our idea for kind of how to restore and put the innovation fund on a platform moving forward that kind of keeps it funded over the long term. It would be flexible based on what we carry over. So again, some year it might be $200,000, some year it might be less, depending on what that carryover is from budget savings. But we kind of like the concept because ideally, what we do with the innovation program should result in some additional budget savings by doing things more efficiently and reallocating resource. So we think it's probably a really nice way to fund that over time and have it be kind of a consistent program. So you'll be seeing that in our budget proposal in a few weeks. You'll see the first weekend May, and we just want to let you know that's kind of where we're heading with the innovation program. So with that, again, our budget, we expect to be pretty status quo. We don't anticipate adding any new positions. We'll continue to maintain what we have and move forward. So that's about it from our side of questions.
So when we get into the new city center, I've heard rumors that maybe we have some shared space between the council and the mayor's office and reduce expense.
Yeah, we're going to see what we can do with that. We're beginning our process, as Cliff may have told you, we begin meeting this week on space needs and allocations. And one of the things the mayor's hit very hard with departments is, don't expect to have your very own personal conference room. We're going to look at particularly larger conference rooms. We'll probably share those, maybe sort of like one to a floor in the building, and then we'll have some smaller conference rooms. And one of the things we're talking about is putting more employees into flexible office space, so kind of into cubicles. But we'll provide, much like we did in the Energy Building, we'll provide some smaller conference rooms where, so if a group of engineers want to get together and not have to do it in the middle of the bullpen, they can step into a smaller conference room and have a quick conversation. So we're anticipating doing a lot more of that with the new city center building. So, you know, so whether, again, whether we share with council, or whether we share with legal, or if it's shared across the entire floor, you know, we'll look for opportunities to share as much, particularly conference space as we can. Probably coffee rooms and those kinds of things. We'll also look at opportunities to share across departments.
As long as access to the Diet Coke is a little easier, then we can work on that.
We can work on that. If we come up with a dumb waiter that gets the mayor's organization's ass to go.
I am not there. I know that, as we've talked about budgets, for example, I'm just going to give you the one that I know that I was involved in. Ms. Provo, this is with, is this now in the council? You guys don't have that in your budget. That's in our council budget, correct?
What we have in the council budget is the portion that goes for scholarships.
Scholarships.
But the actual, anything to do with the float.
And the float is in your budget.
Is in our budget, right. And then we contract with the Freedom Festival to actually run the Ms. Provo pageant.
So is it in your budget, or is it in Parks and Rec's?
It's in Scott's budget in terms of the float. It's in our budget in terms of the expenses, for example, for other issues related to Ms. Provo. So, yeah, but it's, yeah, most of the cost of the float, particularly, that's the lion's share of the money, was put into Parks and Recreation last year.
And I just don't, didn't want to have somebody say, well, I didn't know that was part of my budget. But that, as I see three different entities, I'm grateful that you got it.
Yeah, we got it covered, and I think it's working well. Proof will be the pudding, you know, as we go forward. Freedom Festival seems pleased to have it. And again, so we essentially increased our contribution to the Freedom Festival by the amount of the, no, of the scholarships.
Okay.
Yeah, so our $75,000 cash was supplemented by the amount of scholarships. That's been put into the new agreement for this coming year.
And that is in the council?
That's in the council's budget, so we'll remit that. We're part out of economic development, where the 75 is in part out of the council's budget when we make our annual payment to the Freedom Festival. Okay, we're pretty simple and straightforward, so. So I used my 15 minutes. I apologize.
15 minutes, well, he is. Appreciate it. That brings us to the end. Are there any comments or thoughts before we move to number 10, which is calling for a close meeting? Seeing none, the municipal council will consider a motion to close the meeting. Mr. Jones, can you lead us in this item?
I will, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been proud of the list. My understanding is that there's at least, there's one land disposition item and potentially two general litigation items to be discussed, all of which would qualify for a close meeting under state statutes of appropriations.
All right, looking for that motion. Mr. Henley, second on that motion. Mr. Witterton, all in favor?